Shadé Pashakun.
Here.
Francesco Romans.
Here.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
It is 6:16 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. And we're going to start with our student pledge. And I am very excited to announce or to introduce Cadet Michaela Smart as the daughter of Lee and Louis Smart. She's a freshman at Leander High School and in her first year of ARJ- J R O T C. Michaela says that she is inspired by the example of her grandmother Dee Smart, who also served in the United States Air Force. Thank you Cadet Smart for being with us this evening. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee Texans, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to our spotlight on learning and hear about some of the innovative things happening at Running Brushy Middle School. Come on up.
All right, so the most important people are in front of me here. But a little, first of all, thank you for having us, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Geary. I'm Jim Rose, Principal of Running Brushy, and honored to serve our students and community there. What we wanted to bring to you tonight was a little project we've been working on now for two years. We, I don't know, three, four, five years ago started talking about what should education look like at middle school? What should instruction look like and what's best for kids? And I have a group of teachers here that pushed and pushed and pushed to say, we want to try something different. And so we built this little program called, what we call Inquiry Academy. Basically, it's the idea that we use inquiry-based practices in the classroom. Kids are super collaborative within their core classes and just learning a whole lot. The idea being that instead of looking at teaks first and finding interest later, we look at our students' interests first and then connect the teaks. One of the things that we really want to highlight, one was the teacher empowerment behind this, because this is a teacher-grown project. And then, of course, you'll hear from them in just a minute, our student empowerment as well. But one of the things that, and I don't want to steal Erin's thunder at the end here, but one of the things that, as the video that comes out later didn't capture, we were talking, just having a conversation with teachers, and Anna was there as well. And I gave Danielle a hard time that we should have captured this, but what was said by Erin was, this is one of my favorite years of teaching so far. And when asked why, she said, because I'm getting to know my kids so much better, right? We usually spend so much time getting to know the teaks so well, which we do, but now with the inquiry model, we kind of get to know kids even better than we did before. So I'm appreciative of that, I'm appreciative of the people sitting in front of you. I'm going to let them introduce themselves as they get to talking. They promised me they're not nervous, they may be a little bit, but they're going to be great. So without further ado, here we go.
Hello, everyone. Before I start, I want to thank the LISD board for providing the opportunity to share my InQue Academy experience. In short, the difference between InQue Academy and gender learning is the same difference between self-made and store-bought sandwiches. Both the sandwiches will quench your hunger and provide your necessary nutrients. But while making a self-made sandwich, you'll get to learn about just buying and slicing and dicing of ingredients and preparing and finally putting a sandwich together. It'll be a mini-project. On the other hand, a store-bought sandwich only gives you the necessary nutrients for your survival. InQue Academy also provides the flexibility for the express learning in diverse ways. The teachers set clear guidelines for each project, and within those guidelines, you have the freedom to explore and present your understanding in ways that work well with you. In Ms. Gallagher's class for science, all we do is Ms. Gallagher shows us the teaks that we have to learn and we get to choose the way we want to show our learning to Ms. Gallagher, and she just grades it.
Hi, I'm Hunter. So InQue Academy has deeper thinking because it's cross-curriculum. Because, let's say, in social studies, I have to write an essay. Then in ELA, we're learning about how to structure an essay. So therefore, we give, we get more time to learn and have deeper questions, let's say. So, yeah.
Hi, my name's Lily Laser. And in InQue Academy, we teach through project-based learning, which allows students to use their imagination and allows them to make mistakes and learn from those same mistakes. It also provides learning experiences for us from our peers. For example, if we need to help, if we need help, instead of asking the teachers for help, we can ask our classmates. Also, if it helps, as we work in groups and can talk to each other, finally, if there is other, if there is a challenging question, we normally can find the answer by asking others and someone. It leads us to more challenging questions, and it is easier for some people to understand than having a lot of notes and having your test on them. You can split the work up into it as a question-based learning and projects to understand better.
Me again. So in sixth grade, I was in InQue Academy, and the main difference is that in standard curriculum, you're given a lot of work and the teacher mainly doesn't have any time to talk to you. So you're, so for me personally, I'm just stuck there trying to figure it out. And I normally have to go to my mom for help. But in InQue Academy, the teacher explains it a little bit, then we get to go off and finish the assignment on our own, and the teacher normally helps us.
I think what these kids are trying to talk to y'all about is that this is a collaboration not only between us and an individual student, but the entire learning community. That was one of our driven goals in developing InQue Academy, that we turn Running Brushy into a learning community. How do we network ourselves so that we leverage learning outside the four walls of a specific classroom? How do we leverage learning across content areas and across grade levels and into our community? This year, we've been able to grow and expand from just the work we do in the classroom and our four times-a-year celebration of learning where our students share their learning with the community. We've brought in guest speakers and community experts. We've had two authors come and work with them on their writing. We've had the Native Plant Society come and lead them in a service project where they have developed a native plant preserve in the front of our school. So these kids are doing amazing things inspired by their own learning and their own knowledge. And they went out and plotted and mapped out that whole front yard and did all of the study of the soil and what seeds germinate there and all that. So it's been really phenomenal as a team of teachers to watch these kids grow and learn in meaningful ways to them. And we really aren't having some of the pushback we used to have, right? Because they love it and they want to be there, and they're in our rooms all the time, talking to us about everything. But it's a great community.
I'm Erin Mendoza. I do the social studies piece of InQue Academy. And like Dr. Rose had said, this has been such a fabulous year. I'm so appreciative to Dr. Rose for giving us all the flexibility to try something new. And I'm finding that these kids are capable of doing things that I never would have imagined. And I've been teaching social studies for 18 years, and they're blowing my mind. Giving them the opportunity to really grow and dig deeper into the teaks. They are doing amazing things and they're remembering better and they're working together. And it's, I get to take a step back and watch them teach each other. And so I really feel like they are learning so many of these skills that they need, those graduate profile skills, those college and career readiness skills, to get them ready to keep, keep going.
Katie Gallagher, I'm science. I think the best part about InQue Academy is that we really get to know each kid. We know what helps them to learn, what they're interested in. You know, what their concerns are and where, what enrichments they want, where they want to go. And we really get to see them be creative, and I would say that's probably the best part. I know these students so much better than I've ever known students before. And that's the best part, and we do it as a team. We really work together throughout all the subject areas, cross-curricularly, to really make sure each kid gets what they need. And that's our passion.
So I guess in closing, they've said it all, but I think what's interesting about this project for me is we didn't extend any time. Classes are still the same amount of time, right? But you hear kids talking about deeper learning, your teachers talking about getting to know students even better than they did before. And so the innovation piece of that has been a great part for me. So thank you to you guys, thank you to y'all, and we appreciate the time.
I was like, should I go around the other side? Does that help?
Thank you for joining us for that piece, always the highlight of our meetings. Next, we're going to watch a video recognizing some of our outstanding students and staff.
Welcome back, hashtag #1LISD. I'm Pierce Martin.
And I'm John Simmons. Just one more week left in 2023, and it truly has been an unforgettable semester. Let's take a look at the latest accomplishments from across the district. Last month, College Board named LISD the District of the Year for their Advanced Placement Program.
More than 12,000 school districts across the US and Canada achieved high placement on the annual AP School Honor Roll. Our district jumped off the page for how we both expanded access and at the same time improved performance.
Trevor Packer, head of the AP program with College Board, says that nearly 50% of the students in Leander ISD are taking an AP class with more than 70% of those tests qualifying for college credit. Way to go, students. Keep striving to achieve greatness. Students like us can accomplish countless things in the classroom thanks to so many people.
This week, we want to highlight the School Resource Officers for keeping us safe. Here to share appreciation for our SROs is the Director of Security, Russell Budney.
Hello. I just want to give thanks and appreciation during our School Resource Officers Appreciation Week. And not only that, we want to appreciate and thank our law enforcement partners throughout the community in Leander, as well as appreciate our School Resource Officers who come to us voluntarily and go to a very lengthy and tedious interview to get this position. These are special officers who dedicate their lives and continue to build connections and relationships with our students and staff. For that, we want to say thank you and just continue having a safe week and a safe school year.
SROs aren't the only ones helping keep our students safe. One of LISD's leaders who works in the career and technical education space has been named the 2023 National Safety Educator of the Year by Career Save.
Jamie Everett serves as the Assistant Director of Career Development here in the district. Career Save cited her commitment to continual improvement and advocacy for student success and safety in CTE classrooms as reasons why she was selected for this year's award. Keep up the great work empowering our students for their futures. We're not done bringing home the honors. Jesse, Leander ISD's Financial Services Department received the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International.
This is the eighth time Leander ISD has earned this award reflecting the district's commitment to sound fiscal management and budgetary policies. The review team went on to say that the presentation was easy to understand and showed a dedication to fiscal transparency.
Wow. LISD, this year has just been one for the history books. It's all thanks to everyone working together to make our district just the amazing place it is.
Keep up the great work, and we'll see you in 2024. Always remember, there's no place like LISD.
Great job, Rouse High School, I love that. Next, we're going to move to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. Those that signed up to comment on the school's first public hearing will have their number called after our general citizen comments. Before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we'll watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Autumn Rogers. I'm a 12th grader at Rouse High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in the Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual soon while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda island. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes that the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines specified in the Board operating procedures and be edugal. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in Board meetings either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer, and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Okay, we're going to start with Speaker One. I don't think Speaker One is here because I said they weren't going to film, but I still want to call them just in case they change their mind. Okay, Speaker One's not here. So we're going to go ahead and move over to Speaker Number Two. Speaker Two, if you want to come up. Speaker Two is not, nope, okay. We're going to move over to Speaker Three. All right, Speaker Three, you can go right up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Remi Martinez. I'm a member of the Long Range Planning Committee, and I believe that Scenario Three fails to meet the parameters set forth by the committee. It does not strengthen the student experience, it in fact minimizes it. Overcrowding at North Elementary, failure to follow feeder patterns, multiple reasons of certain students in the splitting of neighborhoods between multiple schools clearly illustrates that this plan is ineffective. The functional capacity increase and lack of space at North will only allow for more than six portables, will have an impact on programming class size, the neighborhood concept, and will drastically reduce the size of the lower grades playing fields. Why would the district opt for this plan when there's going to be severe overcrowding at North but openings at ES30 and at Plain? How did the functional capacity at North jump from 707 to 825? What consideration will be taken for the growing population of the two neighborhood codes that are directly around North? This plan all but guarantees the school will be rezoned again. The students rezoned to North have moved multiple times in elementary school already. Many of them have attended Plain and Larkspur before settling at North. This plan lacks stability for all the students in 2028, but also in fact have the school zones to Wiley and the other half to Danielson, which means they will be moved again. Thank you Shadé and Trish and Anna for meeting with us this past week. I would like the Board to reject this scenario and ask for another.
Thank you, Speaker Number Three. Next to the podium, Speaker Number Four.
First, I'd like to thank Anna, Trish, and Shadé for taking time to speak with some of us this week. I compared the presentations of the thought exchange feedback summaries and was shocked to see that Scenario Three was being presented to the Board tonight. Scenario One had 41 responses, most relating to overcrowding. Scenario Two was presented and received significantly more feedback at 147 responses and around 3,100 ratings. Key thoughts related to children who have been rezoned multiple times. Scenario Three has more students at North than previous scenarios and a substantial increase in functional capacity. This is an attempt to make the numbers look better since the percentage capacity is no longer shaded red, but is actually more students. A similar amount of feedback is reported with 125 responses and around 4,500 ratings with key thoughts going back to overcrowding. Yet Scenario Three is being presented tonight. Administration has clearly responded inconsistently to feedback. This disregards the concerns for overcrowding from Scenarios One and Scenarios Three. Feedback supporting the scenario was generally rated lowest, yet it seems to have been considered most important. I ask that the Board request a new scenario that relieves overcrowding, makes better use of underutilized schools, and considers the feedback from the community consistently with an approved process. It's the Board's responsibility to hold administration accountable for their decision, and frankly, this one is illogical.
Thank you, Speaker Number Four. Next, Speaker Number Five.
All right, hello, my name is Laurel Thompson. I'm a mom to two current LISD students with another starting in 2025. I am here today because I am also deeply concerned with Scenario Three. I'm requesting that a fourth scenario be presented that offers a solution to the many problems we have brought to the Board's attention. I want to specifically mention sped programs and how they are not accounted for in the functional capacity at North. Between Scenario Two and Three, functional capacity was increased by 160. What this capacity fails to take into account is additional special programs needed to adequately support these current students and teachers. Currently, North only has two of the five common special programs with star testing results from last year showing a higher percentage of children in special education than Tarvin and Larkspur. Tarvin and Larkspur have one more classroom than North, and Tarvin currently has 795 kids with the whole third grade in portables because of a robust need for special programs. Many students zoned to North next year are unknown because housing is not yet occupied. It is incredibly risky and irresponsible to increase capacity and go over that capacity when special programs are not fully built out and new students' needs are unknown. We were told we will make it work, but that is not an adequate answer when it comes to educating our children. We should find the best solution, not just one that will make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Five. Next, Speaker Number Six.
I'm concerned about the use of district metrics to project North's student population. PASA states there are more fifth graders leaving than kinders entering, but that's the opposite at North. I used PASA data, verified data from developers and partners, to create neighborhood-specific ratios. ratios, including new developments coming up for sale at rent soon, and using conservative metrics, North will have 997 students after transfers. This will also happen faster than projected as PASA projections for occupancy in Bryson and Tricon are missing homes and show slower occupancy than that confirmed by the developer today. This suggests that we will quite literally run out of room for students at North in the next year, maybe two. As such, I'm strongly requesting another scenario, even more. This rezoning process has been inconsistent, lacking transparency, with inaccuracies and questions leading to more questions. Families deserve transparency to make decisions. You all were so thoughtful when you chose 800-capacity schools. This is worse than 1,000-capacity schools. This is packing 1,000 kids in an 800-capacity building. So I ask you, who is LISD? Are we going to continue business as usual to our own detriment, or will we grow, adapt, and embrace the values of our strategic plan? Say what we mean, do what we say, clear is kind.
Thank you, Speaker Number Six. Next, Speaker Number Seven.
There we go. Happy holidays, happy Hanukkah. I was very happy to see about the AP courses and our recognition for that. Leander has much to be proud of. I was unhappy to see a video that went around about a recent Leander trustee team-building workshop that was mandatory. But unfortunately, one trustee showed up late and then made an absolute...behaved poorly in public and treated their fellow trustees badly in public for all of us to see on the video, and then didn't show up for the second day. If you want to serve as a trustee, you could learn from all these other people at the diocese with you. You could learn a lot from them, and you should try to do that. And you should try to work as a team with them. Maybe you'd actually be able to get something done. We know that your kids go to private schools, and I'm not sure why you choose to be on a public school trustee, but you are. You need to serve all of us in the district and all of our children in the district, and you need to start working with these folks. They do a lot of hard work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker Number Seven. And next, we're going to...our next item on the agenda is the school first public hearing, so...will we call Pete up first, or will we go straight? Okay, all right, Pete, come on up. Sorry, I was getting confused with all the comments.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we are here for our public hearing for our school first rating. First answer, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Basically, this is the accountability system on the finance side as opposed of the school district as opposed to the accountability on the academic side. First goals, I'm not going to read every slide to you, but I can kind of hit the highlights of where the first goals are. It's provide a financial accountability rating system that holds the school district accountable for the resources it receives and its management practices. It's designed to encourage our Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources and to provide the maximum allocation possible for the direct instructional purposes. And it's a tool that can create transparency and the closure of the quality of local management decision-making processes. So the school district uses discerning the financial resources the district receives. So it's basically is a public transparent system of how do we make the...what do we do with the decisions and the resources that we have? Brief history, it originated in Senate Bill 875 with the 76th legislature, which, if I remember, is about 1999, I think it went into effect about 2001. It underwent some revisions by House Bill 5 with the 83rd legislature, and that's when it began a...it put in a process to help with the question about the financial solvency of the school district going forward. Other requirements, prepare our first financial management report. That has been prepared tonight and is at the public table for anyone who wants to pick one of those up. If we do run out, we can definitely provide more from the Business Financial Services Office. We advertised for the public meeting, which has done so, and then tonight we hold a public hearing to discuss the rating. Leander ISD received an A, a superior rating. This is up from the B that we received last year. And so the 2023 rating is based on 21-22 data. It's about a year, year and a half behind. If you recall, last year, we had an...we got a...our score was 88, so we're on the high beam and we are in the solid A. The ratings in transition, just kind of giving a real brief update when it first came out. There are 20 indicators. You had a score between 64 and 70 to get an A, and they had a breakdown rate from a superior, above standard, standard, and substandard. 2013-14, they're kind of doing a transition in the school first rating, so they just basically said you passed or you failed for that one year. 15-16 rating, which is 2014-15 data, that went to the 70 to 100, 15 indicators, 70 to 100 would be an A, 50 to 69 would be B, et cetera. 2016-19 rating years, they kind of...they shortened that up to 90 to 100, basically what we're used to on our academic side, 90 to 100, 80-89 on down. And then the current year, they've increased it from 15 to 20 indicators, but the scoring is still the same, 90 to 100 is an A, 80-89 B, et cetera. Just brief, kind of statewide score of this year, 1,010 school districts passed the school first. Last year, it was 1,013, so three schools less or three districts less. There were six districts that failed the prior year and eight that passed this year. 29 school districts increased their score or got a superior rating in 2022-23 as compared to the prior year, and then on down the line. So the vast majority of the districts do pass. The As are now below 90%, so it's getting harder and harder to get that A, but most of us are...most districts are...sorry, 90% get the A. But they...just do good management, good decisions, stewardship, just trying to do the best with the data that's available and the resources and the system of the state business. So go through the brief, just go highlight the critical indicators. Like I said, there are 20 of them. The first five are strictly yes/no. So did the district submit their audit to TEA within the 150 days of the end of the fiscal year? Yes. Did we receive an unmodified opinion? That's the best...that's the best opinion for an audit. Yes, we did. Was the school district in compliance with the payment of terms of all debt agreements? Yes, we were. And did the district make sure they made all the payments for IRS, TRS, Texas workforce, teacher retirement system, et cetera? Yes, we had. Number five was not scored, so I guess we got a yes on that one. At least we weren't held...we didn't get a no, so. Number six, was that average change in unassigned or assigned fund balance greater than 25% decrease, or did you at least have 75 days of operational expenditures? And yes, we met that criteria, so we passed. Starting indicator seven, we start getting to the point system. So number seven is worth 10 points. Were the number of days cash on hand plus your current investments in the general fund sufficiently to cover your operating expenditures? Yes, we received full points on that question. Question number eight, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? Last year, we received an eight point out of 10 points. This year, we received six out of 10 points. Question or indicator nine, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed the expenditures excluding facilities, acquisition, construction? And if not, did the school district's number of days of cash on hand grade revenue equal to 60 days? So basically, did you have enough cash to even through two days...two months? Yes, we did. Received full 10 points on that question or that indicator. On indicator 10, did we have less than a 10% variance when you compare our budget revenues to the end of the year final? Yes, we received full 10 points on that indicator. Indicator 11, this is a big increase from the year prior, but was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? Now, we'll say this...the indicator did change from last year to this year as well. So last year, it was, you know, was your membership or your enrollment over a five-year period, if it was greater than 7%, you passed. Sorry, I'm going to backtrack. It had the long-term liabilities, assets ratios calculated. If you didn't meet that, then it said, did you have growth of 7% over five years? If you did, then you met the indicator. That was what got us last year. We...due to COVID, we didn't...our enrollment slowed, we did not meet the indicator on the percent raise. We appealed that to TEA, that was denied, so we...that's why we received two points. This year, TEA realized, you know, wow, this COVID is going to affect some...some districts are slowing. They still had significant growth, but it may not be 7%. So they added in one more factor and says, you know, if you didn't get 7%, just to let you know, we were 6.67%. As long as your growth was more than 1,000, you got full points. We had over 3,000, so we received 10 points as opposed to two as we did in the prior year. Indicator 12, was the debt per $100 of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? We received 8 of 10. Last year, we received 8 of 10 this year. Indicator 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? We received 10 out of 10 both years. And then indicator 14, did the school district have not more than a 15% decline in student-staff ratio over three years? And we received...received 10, but it was not scored, so everybody received 10. Indicator 15, was the school district's average daily attendance within the allotted range of the district's biennial pupil projections submitted to TEA? Every two years, school districts go in and submit their per-pupil projections, the numbers that we get from PASA or every district, wherever they get this from, and they submit it. Were we within that range? Were we more than...were we within the allotted range? This year, they didn't score it, so we did get the full five points. You're going to see a lot of the not scorers really on anything with average daily attendance really due to the COVID years. Indicator 16, we did our PIMS data, the data that we submit to the state, did that match basically within 3% of what our financial audit showed? And yes, it did, so we passed that indicator. Indicator 17, did the external auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any incidents of material misweakness? Sorry, material weakness or internal controls of the financial reporting? Yes, we had no material weaknesses in our internal controls, so we passed. And indicator 18 is, did the external independent auditor indicate the annual financial report was free of any incidents of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? We were not...we were in compliance, we were able to receive full 10 points on that as well. We had it in the last two years. Indicator 19, did we post our required financial information on our website? Yes, we have. Received full five points there. And then question number 20, our indicator 20, did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopted its budget? I was not counting, but I know we did at least one time within 120 days of adopting of our budget. But yeah, it's very important for us with our district's growth and value, so we did meet that criteria for a total of 94 points, which is an increase of six points over the prior year of 88 points, and that hints the score of earning an A.
All right, Board of Trustees, we're now going to move to the citizen comments for the public hearing on the school financial integrity rating system of Texas, and we're going to invite those that signed up to comment specifically on this public hearing to come forward when your number is called. Just as a reminder, the board is respected in the ways that we can interact with you during this portion of our meeting per our board operating procedures and policy be edlocal. Speaker Number One.
It's not easy doing the number stuff. Matter of fact, a lot of times, that's the hardest stuff, and this gentleman here has done an incredible job bringing all of that together for us. Despite a lot of misleading information out there, Leander is doing an incredible job of keeping our taxes low, building schools when we need to build them, building buildings when we need to build them, and meeting the needs of our students and our community. I congratulate you and wish you happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker One. Now, we will have a discussion. Trustees, do you have any questions, discussion?
Thanks for the...thanks for the presentation. I'm happy to see that number 11 was changed because that COVID dip was not...the expectation was not reasonable after that. Looking at number eight, and that went from eight points to six points, what...is there anything that needs to be done differently that can make sure that it doesn't dip any further?
Yeah, just...I'll just let me briefly just walk through the calculation on that one. If you got greater than...if the ratio was greater than three, you got full 10 points. If you were two and a half to three, you got eight. If you were two to two and a half, you got six. We were at 2.1968, so we were kind of right around that solid six range. The way this calculation is, is current assets divided by the current liabilities. So basically, what we need to watch out for is what we have...is what we identify as current assets. Sometimes we will invest money, maybe we'll invest it over a year because of the rates that were well, and we have the cash flow to do it, but it deters them, and it no longer becomes a current asset, it becomes a long-term asset, so it's not in that calculation. I don't think that necessarily would change a lot, but it just...that is something I wanted to bring to the attention. Current liabilities are what is due within that one-year period, so that's going to be all our payroll or normal expenses, it's also going to be our debt service expenses as well. So we are a district that has some growth. We just passed a bond, so I wasn't surprised that we went down to eight to six. My goal is to keep that in that six range. I don't want to get near the zero, but depending on a...you know, we're fortunate enough with interest rates being higher, that is more interest, that does help on the current assets as well. So there's a lot of variables. Some are smaller than others, some are bigger players. But really, what we have right now is we're making our bond payments. We do issue new debt about once a year, so it's...it almost...the debt goes up just a little bit. So I would expect a possibility, we may actually go from four to six, potentially hit four. I hope we don't go below four. But that's just...it's just contingent upon where we are right now. We have a major...what's the word I want to use? I don't want to say defeats, but we have a major...next year is a big piece in our bond refunding refinancing plan where the last big portion of our cabs get refunded into CIBs, which is a normal...like your mortgage. You make a payment, part of it's principal, part of it's interest, and cab is not set up that way. So with that going into effect, that is the biggest piece. Going forward, I feel we're in very solid shape, but it may drop a little bit before it goes back up, and that's just the reality of the situation of a district such as ourselves where we are passing bonds to get the growth, to catch up on the growth. However, in the meantime, for the last two years, our growth has slowed. Since our growth has slowed, our budget does not grow as much, and so there's that little piece where we transition. And that's kind of where we're at, we're watching it, it's on our radar, but it's not going to sneak up, but I do want you to know that. We're aware of it, but it's just the reality of the situation of where we are with our growth slowing, and we're still planning to catch up on some of the facilities. And if the growth picks back up, then that will start to correct itself the other direction.
That's it, thanks. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Board of Trustees. Well, thank you. I wish I could take all the credit, but I will not. I have a great team, and we have a great district, and we're able to...we look forward to continuing to do some great things on the financial side to help our school district and our Board of Trustees meet the goals of our strategic plan and continue to do things that's great for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. Board members, is there any discussion or motions related to the consent agenda items?
I move the consent agenda items to be approved as presented. A second.
Francesca makes motion, Christine seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Next, we will move over to Dr. Gearing for the superintendent's report.
Sorry, too fast on the button.
Sorry, too fast on the button. Thank you, Madam President. It's hard to believe that we are in December already, but the Christmas musicals telling their own stories. So we are here and excited to be joined to the close of the semester. Glad for a good break and rest for our kids and our staff over, over the Christmas holidays. Talk a little bit about empowered staff. Excited to have our aspiring leaders, academy students graduate from this university, Concordia University, who we have a great partnership with. They graduated now with a master's degree in educational administration. A B supported in this picture, of course, by Keith Morgan, Dr. Morgan, and Dr. Sarah Grissin, who do great work with this cohort. And we'll be expecting great things from this group as they go forward. Flavor Fest was held at Vandergrift High School this time. We appreciate Southwest Food Service Partner as they help to make sure that the offerings for our kids and our staff are the best that they can possibly be. And so they do a good amount of research, and we're, we're really pleased with the partnership that's working out. I want to point out that we talk a lot in our guiding documents about the graduate profile. But the graduate profile doesn't just apply to our students. And so these skills are skills that our educators exhibit on a daily basis in the district. And so we just wanted to make sure that people understand that when we talk about learners in the district, we're not just talking about kids. We're talking about the adults in the system too. But let's talk about our kids a little bit. We had our leadership L I S D team come together at North Elementary this time, and they were given the great treat of a tour by students of North Elementary. I might point out that the sign on the wall says deeper learning. Just saying. How wily students had the opportunity to go to the Capitol and provide entertainment there. Both their band and their choir was there, but just thought this was such a great opportunity for them and such a great visual representation of public school students representing the great state of Texas. We're really thrilled to have what is called Inclusion Breakfast at Vista Ridge High School. And I just love these two photos because they showcase student empowerment, staff empowerment, and impactful family engagement all at the same time. If you've never been to the Inclusion Breakfast at Vista Ridge High School, I strongly encourage you to take that opportunity to go by there next year and just witness the incredible things that our faculty and families are doing together to really empower all of our students, each and every one. We have some budding artists in the theater club at Blockhouse Creek Elementary, so you better watch out. In a couple of years, these guys will be in high school musicals across the district. Great things are happening. I just love this picture because it represents so many things. And just some of the things that I see here are focus. And you see the intensity of these students as they engage each other. I do see some aggression in there, which is, in this situation, not a bad thing. There's competition. There's physical fitness. There's mental strength. There's agility. There's ball skills. There's strategy. And there's lots of communication going on all in this one moment in time. She has her eye firmly on the goal, as do a lot of our kids in Leander I S D. And that's one thing that we're working really hard on is goal-setting with our students to make sure that they all have their eye firmly on the goal. And this is the moment that learning happens. So all of that performance is happening and crazy on the court, but it's this moment of reflection and talk and interaction between students and staff that is where the learning happens. And that's something that we really need to pay attention to across the district, on the court, but in our classrooms as well, is that one moment of time when that interaction happens, because that's where the power exists in transforming what we do in our district. Then there's this that's happening, which is just a moment later, and that's because this is happening. And our teachers, our staff advocate for our kids. They go to bat for our kids every single day. I don't know what this conversation is about, but when they get belly to belly like that, that's a special moment, aren't they? And then Christmas. All right. Let's talk about safe and innovative learning environments for a second. We appreciate all of the board members who came out and toured. The new elementary school number thirty that's going in just north of Divine Lake on St. Gabriel Parkway, and they got to witness the pouring of our insulated tilt wall process, which is a fascinating process because they actually poured those walls on-site on the foundation. And then they stand them up and put them together like Lego bricks. And this white veneer that you see on the outside of the walls is actually the white mold that was laying on the concrete slab that the concrete was poured over. And inside that mold are all the bricks for the facing. So then they just peel off the mold, and the wall is complete on the outside. They power wash the wax off, and the, and the outset of the building is complete. So things are going very well at Elementary School Number Thirty. Jimmy has told me that we have eighty-five degrees for the next four months scheduled, so no bad weather. We should be, we should be dried in hopefully by March. And if that happens on time, then we will be in good shape for a July substantial completion and move in of staff and students on time for an August of 2024 start. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Dr. Garing, we talked one or two meetings ago. There was some issue with permitting, kind of some hiccup, and so it delayed a little bit with Elementary School Thirty. Are we all back on track now? Is everything going? Permitting's going? We're now back on schedule?
Yes, all of our permitting issues have been resolved. The city of Leander is working exceptionally well with us, and we're in constant conversation with them over those issues. We are tight on schedule, so that did put us back several weeks. It is important that Jimmy's weather predictions come true over the winter months so that we can get dried in by March. But without a significant delay of some sort, I think we'll be tight, but in pretty good shape.
All right. If there are no other questions, then we will move over to item nine A, which is discussion of Elementary School Number Thirty, our attending rezoning recommendation.
Madam President, Board members, Dr. Garing. We're all here tonight to discuss the Elementary Thirty tenant zoning. I'm clicking, changing mine here, so I can see it. Okay. Tonight, we're here to provide the purpose of tonight is to provide the overview of the steps, steps that we took throughout the elementary school tenant zoning process, and then also present a recommendation for the Elementary School Number Thirty of tenant zoning to the Board of Trustees. Of course, this started back in October when we brought the process and the charter to the board and reviewed that. And of course, our charter that we used was developed by the Long Range Planning Committee. And you can see the two key tenants is strengthen the student experience by establishing long-term stability, access to choice, and honor the neighborhood school concept, where we're still able to meet the intent of the long-range plan. Second tenant, of course, is priority, prioritized fiscal responsibility. It's done through maximizing the usage of our facilities through strategic rezoning or optimization opportunities and deferring timing of future construction. And of course, this was our process that we had brought to you in October. It was not filled out as complete because we did go through three different scenarios, but this is our entire process that we did go through and follow. And of course, this is our, in timeline, just spelling it out. And I don't know that I need to go through every single one, but you can see we did use, release the scenarios, and our feedback was collected through the Thought Exchange, Let's Talk, and Community Forums. And we had six community forums for this zoning process. Okay. The, of course, we did, as we mentioned, we released three scenarios. You can see the three dates that we did that. And we had six community forums. We had two at Plain for Scenario One. And then when we got our feedback and we went to the second scenario that had more impact of Tarvin and Baghdad Elementary is where we had those forums. And then on, when we released Scenario Three, we went back to, actually, that should be North Elementary. And then Plain Elementary is where we had those. And of course, we did have Thought Exchange for all the scenarios along with Let's Talk. And there's a link there if anybody wants to go, and you can see some of the feedback that we collected at the community forums through the nights. This is just some pictures of, of the forums and talking with various community members and hosting them. Some of the themes that we collected throughout the community input was questions about moving the overcapacity numbers from one school to another in Scenario One, and then concerns with overcrowding of North Elementary, and then concerns about the impact of moving students so many times, and then splitting of Summerlin subdivision, concerns regarding the not showing Elementary Number Thirty-two on our map or the tables, and then questions about functional capacity because we did make a change during the process. Of course, our process goes into spelling out what we do. And then when administration feels we have a solid recommendation, then it is taken to the Long Range Planning Committee and...
Okay, so picking up from there, we had a Long Range Planning Committee meeting on December seventh to bring the scenario, and the main point there is to have them look at through the lens of the zoning charter and the long-range plan, and does the scenario, to what degree does it actually meet those parameters? Then continuing the timeline, we have the recommendation tonight. And then looking forward, we will be seeking consideration for approval at the January eighteenth meeting. Following that, whenever the scenario is approved, is when we would actually finalize the transfer exceptions, and so that, that comes after. But so let's talk about the Long Range Planning Committee. So again, you know, part of the, the overall process is that we, we bring back the scenario to the Long Range Planning Committee to look at, to what degree does this plan meet the parameters that are laid out in the long-range plan? And so we asked, y'all have done a consent program with me before, so we did the same thing with our Long Range Planning Committee. So at that meeting, we went through all of the scenario. We went and talked through each piece and then answered a lot of questions. And at the end, we asked them to fill out a form, because this was, we were on Zoom, and to say, to what degree do you feel that it meets the parameters? And so you can see the overall results there. We also did ask in that same form that if you scored, if you had eighty percent or lower, I mean, I'm sorry, below eighty percent, then what is it that would bring your, your percentage up? Again, y'all have done this with me before, so you know that's a standard. We want to see, what is it that you feel like is missing? So some of the themes that we heard, we had, you know, six responses on that. So a, one person was feeling like the feeder pattern data, which was not presented with all of this, was missing, and that that person needed that feeder pattern data to be able to make an informed decision. We do have feeder pattern data for you tonight. One person felt like that they needed, that we needed overall more feedback and had made a comment in the meeting about, gosh, it feels like we got low responses on, through the community forums, Let's Talk, and Thought Exchange, and felt like we needed to go out and get more feedback, and that we needed more time to discuss. Another had actually suggested a whole different scenario in, in their response. Somebody was, again, about, felt that we didn't show Number Thirty-two on the plan, and so that was what we needed to do to, to raise their, their percentage. And then others were, could be another scenario, feel like, and there was another scenario requested. But overall, again, you can see the majority had an eighty percent or higher as far as meeting those parameters. So with that, the next step in the process, after we looked at all of those results, we felt like we were ready to bring that to, to you all to present the recommendation for your consideration.
So tonight, we are going to recommend that board adopt the implementation of Elementary Number Thirty, Tenant Zoning Scenario Three at the January eighteenth board meeting. And we'll go into some information that drove us to that decision. Of course, this is our scenario that we are recommending. Multitasking. This is our scenario, and as you can see, it's hard to point, but if you're familiar, the sort of reddish up in the northern part of our district, north of the river, the, yeah, we can point, but it's hard for y'all to see. The, that is the Summerlin area west of one eighty-three. And so what we're recommending is moving two neighborhood codes, eleven oh five and eleven forty from Larkspur to north, which will put all of Summerlin at North Elementary. And then leaving north alone, and then the, when you get into the yellow, that's all of Elementary Thirty, Attendance Zone. And we're recommending moving thirty-nine eighty, which is currently at Plain, but moving them to Elementary Thirty. And then we have over on the very far east side of our district, there's two neighborhood codes, twelve twenty-five, twelve, twelve fifteen, that we're recommending to move from Tarvin to Parkside. And that's the Parkside on the river and the Whitetail area. And so the, that will help us with deferring twenty, or thirty-one, Elementary Thirty-one. But then we have a couple of little neighborhoods going from Plain to Camacho, from Camacho to Whitestone, and then from Camacho to Baghdad. And that's the gist of what we're recommending in tonight's zoning exercise. And when we do that, you can see the numbers that, you can see what happens originally. And without that first move, the Larkspur would be over a thousand students next year. And so this drops them down to eight sixty, and then puts north at eight sixty-seven. And so I will say, we've heard comments about the functional capacity that was changed between Scenarios Two and Three. That was done mainly to be more transparent. Use of the facilities really is driven by how they use their classrooms. And we actually know that when a new school does open up, you have a tendency to use your classrooms for what typically the smaller sectors, resource rooms that are used for, they expand out into a classroom. And so when you look at that, you might have a small program in a classroom. We typically will, on average, use twenty-three students per classroom. And then if you put a small program, you might have seven students. And so you lose sixteen students of capacity, but you have all the space right now. They expand out into the classrooms. And so it's very common as the campuses do this, new campuses, as you start growing, those small programs get pulled back into the small spaces that was designed and built for them during the, in the facility. And so it pulls your functional capacity back up. And at the north, we had just those situations where they expanded into the classrooms. And now she... And now she knows as she grows, those spaces will be pulled back from it and classrooms will go in there. And so we had conversations, the principal and I, several times about how to go about, you know, projecting for next year. Because when they project their building usage, they need grade level projections. They don't receive those till usually late, somewhere in December or January. And so when they get that, she has a better feel of how her building can be used. And so we looked at different options of how to get additional classroom for every grade level, two additional classrooms for every level. And then we, a calculator ran numbers just to understand where she could go to. And I didn't want to take it too high up front because if in some reason she grows more than what's projected, she needs to have some flexibility on how to deal with the additional students. And so we went at eight twenty-five, which was very reasonable. That was a big concern about the overcrowding. And so we know it was going to go up. And so we made the decision to go ahead and increase that during scenario three, which it makes, the numbers wouldn't change, but the percentages would. And so that's more realistic now, eight twenty-five. And so you can see what happens with the numbers. You can see as we go into twenty-six, twenty-seven, the early childhood center is supposed to open at Halsey. And you can see what those numbers then, they actually reduced Larkspur north some more. And so then they have a slow growth. And then we know if for some reason the projections were to hold true for the next four years, north will need additional relief in twenty-eight. But our thought was, just like Summerlin requested, don't move us, don't split us. They were just moved two years ago. We'd rather decided to leave them at north currently, reevaluate in three years when we have new data. We'll have more confidence of what's happening around the north. And then if it does hold true, we've got to provide relief. And we wanted to show that at the campus of what would be needed if we didn't do or had the additional growth. And so we actually showed that. And then, of course, what we did, like we like to do now, we like to show out the ten years like we did in secondary, what happens if all the numbers were to hold true? We know after five to ten years, the numbers, you don't want to build your schools based on those, but you do want to use them as a planning tool to see what is potentially out on the horizon. And of course, each year we get new data, new numbers from our demographer. It provides additional confidence for, you know, for this year it's ten years, but next year it's at nine years out. So you get a better feel of what's going to happen further out in the time period. And so what we've shown is when we talked about the two neighborhoods from Tarvin to Parkside, that was it allowed us to push out Elementary thirty-one from what's is on twenty twenty-five on the long range plan to twenty twenty-eight. It actually was able to push it out to there. So by doing that and then moving up thirty-three to open in the same year, you'll be able to zone that section of the district and move people one time, except for that one neighborhood, twelve fifteen. Everybody else gets moved one time and they should be set then for long term. And so it smooths out the moving of families as we move forward. The one thing that we show on this map is you can see, we indicated two neighborhoods in Summerlin to be moved to Plain. Again, that's all continued upon projected growth doesn't come to, you know, fruition. We actually see that, but we have a lot of variables over the next three years could impact that. And so there's no guarantee that they have to move, but we're wanting to be upfront and transparent that if it does hold true, we have to give relief to north at that point. And so we've shown it on here much as we could. Of course.
Jimmy, can I jump in real quick? I just want to point out that we did have on this map Elementary thirty-two. Again, based on feedback as we were going through this process of of people questioning, okay, where is thirty-two if we have thirty-three on here? And that is still a part of our long range plan. And the long range planning committee is, will be evaluating about what is their recommendation for when that would come on board. But we wanted to just be transparent of that is still definitely on the table with our community.
Yes, and I'll add to it, in my mind, when we didn't, if you had the school on there and showing it, it sometime will confuse the community and say, oh, we're zoning for that school now. And we didn't want to show a catchment area for that school. We're not zoning for it, it has zero impact on the north. And that's why in our mind, let's just, don't confuse the rest of the community. But we could have shown it like this, just say location and not shown anything. And maybe that would have eased the community's concerns because it's definitely still on the plan. It's just, it didn't impact any of the zoning in the northern part of our district. So this is the numbers now as you see it from if this plan was to move out and everything held true and you opened thirty-one and thirty-three, you can see the numbers as you go out at the end of the window. Both Larkspur and north are within fifteen, nine hundred or to nine fifteen. They're still large campuses, but this is a fast growth area. And we're trying to maximize the usage. What we're really not trying to do is build an extra school and then have it underutilized. We're towards the end of the district, the growth. We want to be very careful at this point to have the time now when, if we can push the schools out, it buys us better time to make sure the school's going to be needed. Because if we have any turn in the data or the growth, we can adjust it. But once you build that school, we're we're locked in. And so we're really trying to keep the balance, it's a fine balance of building your schools too early versus not getting too large. And so that's the challenge we're in. Of course, this is the feeder pattern that was asked about at the long range planning committee. And you can see in the yellow, this is, yellow was just the part of the zoning that we did. And so the rest of the feeder patterns was already there. But you can see the biggest part, really, the biggest change is north is definitely split. It was split before we started the process. But what went up was the number of students go to Danielson because Summerlin is going to north, then to Danielson Glen, where the Bryson community goes from north to Wiley. And so that's the big difference. The Danielson number went up, but that's, they were already split. And just a reminder, we have fourteen elementary schools that are split to different middle schools. It's not uncommon. We, you don't have a perfect feeder pattern and you won't with the number of schools that we have. And so it, you have to do your best, and that's a good percentage of split. Large cohorts are going to each of those middle schools, so they're not going alone, which is good.
All right, so through all of this conversation, we definitely have heard this notion of what is the impact to a campus and this this notion of overcrowding and and how, what is that impact to our student experience? So a couple of things that we have definitely been talking through in in our community forums and individual conversations. One is that no matter how many students are in a in a campus, we do have set ratios. So in pre-K, we do staff one to eighteen and actually, I would say that's two to eighteen because it's one teacher and then we have an instructional assistant that is in there. So that that is for our pre-K. In kinder through fourth grade, we actually, there is a state law of a one to twenty-two. And and so we do follow that. And as as we get to that point where we have twenty-two in a class, then we start monitoring and we start watching. And our our human resources department is amazing in making sure that we're supporting and adding a teacher as needed when when we do hit that point. In fifth grade, there's actually not a staffing ratio that is set by the state. But as a district, we actually have a target of twenty-five to one. And so that is what we definitely stay at. And again, as we approach that twenty-five, if we go over, then again, human resources is working with our campus principals to identify how do we want to work through that and and supporting with another teacher. And Jimmy did talk about the developing of the campus usage maps. And so we we obviously, principals, they're starting with their grade level classrooms and then also looking at special programs and the needs of the program that will actually drive the space for that they'll use. Year to year, campus principals are looking at their projections and looking at how they utilize their building. And and especially when you have a new school, like specifically north, when it opened, you have all of this space because we know that it was not full. And so everybody gets a big classroom, right? And and actually, the principal, Ms. Maginell, had talked with her teachers about, like, the reading specialist. Like, I can give you a big classroom right now, but as we grow, I'm going to have to take that back. And that is something that actually, those conversations happen all across the district. I can remember even back when I was a principal of giving a space to our PTA and saying, I can give this to you until I need this classroom back because of the needs. And those are just the conversations that we have. And so definitely you're reevaluating that every year. And and like Jimmy said, as we were looking at these percentages and what was really happening with north and seeing a seven hundred and seven capacity, functional capacity at north, when a campus just down the road that is the same design has a much higher capacity, he was like, we got to dig in and figure out really what's going on here. And through those conversations, was able to identify, Ms. Maginell was able to identify where she could make some shifts to make sure that we have adequate, more than adequate, a room for for students.
As Sarah mentioned, special programs are also a huge consideration when we are rezoning as well as opening a new campus. And so there is a consistent process that we follow annually, even if we're not opening a new campus. Because our goal is to get our students as close to their home campus as possible and receive the services that they need to make progress on their IEP or their five oh four plan. And so when a school is opened, we allocate special programs classes. And as Sarah mentioned, for our K-five classrooms, we also have ideal ratios to support our students in special programs. Jimmy mentioned that there are some classrooms that might have a ratio of one to seven at the highest. And so we look at those numbers. We also look at individual student needs. So we use a student support scale as well as those ratios to determine the staffing on a campus. So as a campus grows, we are consistent with those ratios. So it doesn't mean that we're going to continue to add twelve and thirteen and and make those class sizes larger for special programs. We are consistent with our ratios as well as looking at those student needs. And so if your student does require that specialized programming, if the new zoned campus has it, we would support your student and your family in that transition to the new campus. If the new campus does not have the specialized programming that your student needs, then we would work with the family to remain at their current campus so we can have the continuity of services for those students. Let's see, I've talked about some of those out of order here. But as students are rezoned, it is a priority for us. We've been working really hard this year on transition from campus to campus. This isn't just from rezoning process, but anytime a student is transitioning campuses, we want that transition to be smooth. And so we have a plan that we have developed to communicate with the parent, communicate with the new campus, provide social stories, fixtures, visits, all of those things to help that transition be as comfortable and as easy as possible because we know that transitions can be difficult for our students in special programs. And we also follow the transfer process that everybody else follows. And so once the zoning is decided and once those parameters are decided for moratorium and who gets to stay and all of those things, we do follow that process. And just as any other program, a parent is welcome to do a voluntary parent transfer if they wish to stay at their campus. But we also follow those same parameters.
Okay, so speaking of transfers, that is something that we will actually finalize all of the transfer exceptions once the attendance zones have been set. And so one thing that we have been talking with our community, our practice has been over the years and from as long as we have been in this district, that we have allowed fifth grade students to be grandfathered in and not to be affected by the rezoning. So for instance, if you are attending Larkspur and going to be in fifth grade next year, that you would, and you're supposed to be zoned, rezoned to north, that you would be grandfathered in and allowed to to stay at Larkspur. What our practice has also been is that your siblings would be able to follow that, fall into the same grandfathering as well. None of that has been finalized, but that has been our practice for decades. And we do not anticipate making many change, any changes from that. But again, nothing is finalized yet.
And I would just add, they're allowed to stay at the campus, but they are to provide their own transportation that we do not provide. So we always like to make that statement so it's clear to the parents and don't get surprised.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, so moving along in our process, you can see, following our presentation tonight, we will be coming back on January eighteenth, seeking for your consideration around this attendance zone. And so we'll be seeking that that vote on January eighteenth. We again will finalize transfer exceptions once ever it is approved. And implementation of the new attendance zones would be for August of twenty twenty-four because Elementary thirty is going to open. Okay, all right, so at this point, we are going to open the floor for any questions, discussion. And I know Jimmy has all of the answers.
So Dr. Brison, you mentioned that for the surveys, for the members of the long range plant planning committee, those that scored below eighty percent, it looked like you addressed their issues. The only one that I didn't seem to hear was that concern about having another scenario. Did someone actually present a scenario or what was that like?
So I'll let, definitely let Jimmy tack on to this. We actually had a couple of different members, whether from long range planning or that were members in the neighborhood that were affected by this zoning, that presented possible scenarios for us to consider. And Jimmy and Marty did an incredible job of digging into them and really looking at what were the pros and cons for each one and and then using that to help inform what was going to be our recommendation. Jimmy, if you have anything else you want to say.
Exactly right. We, anytime we get a recommendation from the community, we like to go ahead and run it. We'll take the time to put the data in and look at the options. Does it provide something that we didn't think about? But then we also look at pros and cons to it. And so that's what we did. And then we provided that feedback back to the members and let them, you know, see what we were thinking. And of course, you're never going to have a hundred percent agreement. Everybody has their own ideas, but from our lens, we put it in there and run it and evaluated it, gave everybody a chance to see what we were, what it would look like. And so that's what we did.
Jimmy, we had some conversations. And one of the things I told you I was going to bring up, and there's quite a few, and there's some that are offline, I'm not going to bring them all up. But one of them was continuous improvement. And the question was, did the community feel off kilter by being given one project of functional capacity and another one? And in continuous improvement, how do we make sure that does not happen again? Because that does not make you feel comfortable.
I agree.
You need to talk about that, so would you?
We had lengthy discussions about doing that, but knowing the numbers were going to change, we didn't want to move families knowing the number was artificially low that day at this year. And so part of our process, we were actually changing the form. We're going to be sending out a new form this year. It's a very, we send it out every year and we get feedback, you know, the building usage from the principals. It's a complicated form. It identifies every little space in the building, what are you doing with it? And when we're looking for functional capacity numbers, those small spaces don't have the impact. You're only looking at your classroom spaces, that's what is your functional capacity. And so we're going to remove all the other spaces and just, we went through all the campus maps. We have basically four different. We have basically four different designs of an elementary school, and we've marked every room as a classroom, and we have exact consistency between each design type, so we have consistency. The one change, difference is, North does have 44 classrooms where everybody else has 45. Because what they did was, if you look at some of the older new design schools, the Quest Lab and the Computer Lab were next door to each other. Computer Labs aren't used anymore, and so that was made into one space. It could be partitioned off, but they use it as one space, and so we count it as one. And so that was the big difference between the schools. But taking all that information, we're putting on the forms now every classroom number that we consider a classroom, and they've gotta tell us how they're using those spaces, and it will automatically tell you, it's gonna help us identify automatically if it's kindergarten, it'll put in 22. If it's pre-K, it's gonna put 18. If it's fifth grade, it's gonna put probably 24, we'll take an average. And then just any small spaces, Kimberly puts another program, it's gonna put the appropriate number there. And so we can very clearly see what's happening in these spaces. And when you have a functional capacity that's lower than normal, it's gonna be very easy to identify and then have those conversations with the campus, especially if a request for a portable comes in, it helps us have those conversations to help us.
I'm gonna share the mic, but let me wrap up this question on this one, which is that I do appreciate continuous improvement, working on that form. I think it's really important for our community to know what is, how are we calculating, where do we come up with functional capacity, so they have some grounding there, and then it stays as we move forward, so that we all kind of can have input and all be on the same page. But I'm gonna pass the mic on, have some more questions later. Thank you.
And I do wanna add, one thing we're doing also, when you open a new school, you have these situations, we're gonna default it to 800, 820, we're gonna calculate a number and we're gonna use a default when they're smaller, so you don't publish a smaller percentage like this that's artificially low. And so we want, you can have, I mean, if you look at 44 classrooms and you multiply by 23, if we put 23 kids in every classroom on average, that's 1,012 students. Well, we know you have carve-outs, you have specials that are gonna take spaces, and facility planners will use 80 to 85% as a guideline. I use 80% just to keep it some flexibility within the space, and that takes it down to 806, 820. And so that's a fair number to use on these facilities, and so we're not artificially using numbers that make it look awful. So, but that's just part, we're trying to make it better, make it easier for the public to understand, because the other way was complicated. So we're trying to make it better and easier.
I wanted to piggyback what Trish had said. The functional capacity, I hear what you're saying, but when I go back and I look at the rezone that we did for Tarvin and for North as well, the functional capacity we have listed for 28 and 29 is 800. So my concern is, when we start doing rezoning for 31, how can I be assured that those numbers aren't gonna change again? Because when we approved North and Tarvin, it's 800. Now we're doing this scenario and that number changed. I need to know as a board member that I can trust these numbers, because these rezones we approved already, right, with 800 capacity? And now we're doing another one, and it changed mid-time, so I'm trying to understand, where is that assurance as I can have as a board member, knowing that when we go back to do more rezones, that this isn't gonna change mid-process?
Well, mid-process it won't, because we're taking the artificially low numbers out of the equation. We're gonna resolve that. We're gonna have either, if it's, by the time we get to, if it goes to 28, another four years, that their numbers will be most likely high enough, you know, and that will, if it's lower, we're gonna have it at a default, 800 or 825 will decide that, but we're not gonna artificially bring it down when they have the capability to use all spaces for everything. So we're gonna keep the numbers where they should, when they first open. Now, it can change year to year, but our plan is, by changing this form and taking that artificial low, we won't have this situation.
I guess my next question, so we have a new form, are we gonna go back and reevaluate every single building we have? Because, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I start thinking about the secondary rezon we just approved, and I start thinking about capacity there, and are those numbers correct?
The secondary is a whole different, complex situation. You're not able to look at it like you did at elementaries, because you have electives, you have blocked scheduling. It is just, you have to rely on the principals at a secondary level to give you what their needs are. And that's, those numbers never change. If you look at the middle school and high school, their capacity doesn't change, because their scheduling and electives drive it. And so we know we have to allow them the flexibility. But elementaries, those students move into classroom, that's their room, not at a high school or middle school, and so.
So would this be an administration policy change, a board policy change? Like, I'm trying, I need like some assurance, I guess, going forward.
I mean, administration, we are definitely making a change, but I don't know if you have any of...
I don't think it's a board policy change, because it's something that we have to be flexible with somewhat. We're gonna do what's right. We do reevaluate it every year for every school, because things change, programs change, different numbers of kids come into different grade levels, and so that makes a difference if you have kindergarten classrooms or fourth grade or fifth grade classrooms. So it is something that we'll reevaluate every year.
I think for me, I just wanna make sure we don't find ourselves in the situation that we're in now, because it's created a lot of distrust in the community by changing that. It's like, all of a sudden, guess what, we have space, and I don't know where kid from. And I mean, I know, I understand, but I think for me as a board member, because I have to vote on this at the end of the day, right? I need to know going forward, when we have other rezon matters, that this isn't gonna happen again. And I don't know how to have that reassurance or that accountability piece. And I don't, I don't think it needs to be set numbers and policy. I think just knowing that there's a process, but I need to make sure that process is gonna be continuously, and I, as a board, I, I'm gonna be checking it.
I agree. And we do not plan to, I think by what we learned and understanding, when you have a new building, what is being done, we're gonna take that out of the equation, so we don't have to deal with that again.
And what we can also do is, after we have reevaluated all of the campuses, we can make sure that we follow up with our Board of Trustees in a Friday memo or even, you know, here, so you can see, okay, after we have reevaluated, then here's, here's where we are. And so that way, we're transparent.
And can we make sure we give that information to the Long Range Planning Committee? Because they are also, this is a big discussion right now, and especially possibly repurposing. I mean, I want to see what those capacity numbers look like now.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, it is completely intertwined, so yes, we will make sure they have it.
Good point.
I think it's appropriate for the board to hold us accountable as administration. I do wanna point out the fact that as soon as we realized where we were, we brought all of that up on the table, laid it out exactly as it was, admitted where we were, and made that change. So I just wanna be careful how we talk about trust, because I think trust is earned extensively over time. We make mistakes, we own our mistakes, we bring them to the table very transparently.
I have another question about capacity, because I know that the portables are reflected in some of the capacity numbers for the older campuses. Is there a way going forward that we can break that out, so that we can see what is, I mean, at most campuses, portables are temporary. I know some of them, they're gonna hang out for a good long while. But can we break that out to the functional capacity of just the building, and then have something to the side that says how much more the portables are adding to those numbers?
Are you looking at the campus moratoria sheet?
I am looking at Slide 17. And I know, like, specifically for Whitestone, it says the capacity is 918, but that's including a whole grade level that's outside.
That's not. That's based on permanent structure. We don't include portables in the functional capacity. What, on our campus moratoria sheet, we show functional capacity, and then we show the number of portables, and then capacity with portables, is what we do on that sheet. On zoning, on all of our sheets, it's strictly on permanent buildings, is what we calculate functional capacity on, because portables come and go.
Okay, I'm gonna have questions about that later. I'm gonna switch gears on us just for a minute, if I can, and go to Slide number 20 for Impact to Special Programs. A few questions about that. I understand that when a school opens, and you said the SPRO classes are allocated and it's based on NEET, I'm wondering about the sped ratio and how that works? And can you speak to when those numbers were created and hasn't been revamped any time recently?
So those numbers were created several years ago in partnership with HR and Finance, with a heavy recommendation from the special education team to look at, we don't have a set number, like, we use the number one to seven, but if we have a lot of students with significant needs in a classroom, seven might be too many. If we have students that don't have a significant need, seven might be a fine number, or eight might be fine. And so we look at those numbers every year. That is a guideline, but we use a student support scale in partnership with that ratio. Sometimes we cap a classroom at five because of student needs, sometimes we can go one or two students over that. So they are an idea based on recommendations from our specialists and our coordinators in our department.
Okay. Just a little bit of feedback that I've gotten, to be completely transparent from teachers, is that they don't have enough support. And if you look at the COVID situation that happened, and the number of students that we have entering special education with significant issues, is that they do not have enough bodies, and they're, they're really struggling. And so just from a board perspective, for me, hearing from teachers and staff, who I think that we really need to look at those numbers carefully, and I'm hoping that we can relook at how we can get those teachers the support that they need, and obviously our students, right? So if teachers are stressed out, then students are stressed out. And so it's a ripple effect. So I just, I wonder, you know, I know it's not a state thing, it's probably an us thing, and if there's any way we can look at that as a system to make sure that our teachers are getting what they need.
Yes. We also engage in listening sessions, so this process is more than numbers for us. And so I think it was three years ago, as I stepped into this position, we worked with our team to create the student support scale, so we could move past just ratios. It's important for us to know the level of the student need. It's not perfect yet, but that was the reason for adding that in. And so that is looked at every year. We are also engaging in listening sessions. We do a spring listening session tour, and so we're starting those up, so we can hear from our teachers. We get feedback from principals and specialists and coordinators all the time, but there's a different value in talking to our teachers and our instructional assistants on campuses, and so we're starting that process as well.
Definitely. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I know, I know with COVID factoring in to all of that, I know if we looked at it three years ago, just to make sure that we're like staying on top of that and really hearing what they're, what they're saying, and get them the help that they need. Thank you.
Yes. So while we're in the capacity question or issue, my question relates to the special programs at North that we heard this evening being just two out of the five. And so as the campus might roll out more services, would, would they expect to lose at least one classroom or at most one classroom? What does that look like?
Did you say expect to lose one classroom?
Yeah, as in, one classroom could be dedicated to special programs.
Yes, it could be. And so to clarify, when it was two out of the five classrooms, we look at special education programming in elementary with Inclusion Resource, SCSS, SLE, I-CAP, and IVC, our behavior programming, as well as early childhood special education as well. And so currently, North has Inclusion Resource and SCSS. As we, as I mentioned earlier, we look at every number and every student to see where are students zoned, and are there enough students that warrant us to open a program? Even if we are not opening a new campus, we look at being, we want our students to be as close to their home campus as possible. And so if we have enough students to open a program, we will do so, and we'll partner with the families to move them to their home campus. And we also wanna be second to student needs, we wanna be visibly responsible. And so it's, you know, we don't wanna open a program with one or two students, as well as when we look at least restrictive environment, if we have a student that's one-on-one in a program, there aren't those student models for them to learn with. And so those are all factors that we take when we're looking at adding or even closing a program and shifting to another campus, and we do that every year.
I have a question about special education. So we have the students, right, who've been identified, but the numbers that we have right now do not include students either A, who are in the evaluation process, or have yet to be identified. So these numbers could potentially go up. So say we approve this rezon, right, and we have a significant amount of students that have been identified for either SLE program or SLE, I-CAP, whichever program they need, you know. My question is, you start looking at campuses around North, we know that those are early childhood hubs that we decided in 2021, and they're at capacity, we know that. So where would those kids go then? Because we know Larkspur, we know Tarvin, we know Plain, Pleasant Hill, Aiken, Parkside. So essentially, we could eventually move kids from Summerlin all the way past those schools, because we don't have the capacity for those students in sped. So I'm trying to understand, how do we, when we're thinking about this rezon and our numbers and anticipating, because we know across the state of Texas, special education rates are up, we know that we see it in our district. And so my question is, what happens to those students? Because I know there's only so much space, and you really want your child to be at your local school, your local community school. But I, I understand, I am a parent, that my child is transferred, I understand that that might work for each and every parent. But what happens to those students? Like, I'm trying to anticipate that growth, and I don't see this growth anticipated in here, just because of the way the timing is. I mean, in an ideal world, I would love for us to do the rezon in May, and we have our evaluations caught up, and we get the students what they needed, but that's not the reality here. So what happens to those students?
We plan for that ahead of time. So the numbers do include 80% of the students in evaluation for growth. We don't know where they're going to qualify, because we don't predetermine that placement. However, Emily Gray is a master at that data and helping us look at all of that. So we literally look kid by kid, by campus, who's in evaluation, and we look at about 80%, that's about the number that qualify for special ed if they go through the evaluation process. And we will put them in the numbers. We know that they will move, because some might need an SLE program, some might be SCSS programming, some might just be speech-only. But we do plan for those students in numbers. And then we monitor our staffing, and we monitor our student numbers right now, weekly, but we do it regularly throughout the year. And if we need additional staffing or need to shift staffing, we do that to make, and to meet student needs. And our special education programming does take a priority on a campus, especially if they are zoned there. And so if we need to continue, you know, an example is, at Larkspur, that was mentioned tonight, they have five LID programs, and they are in the building, and they are able to collaborate, so that we're meeting the student needs within a good ratio to be able to support the students.
Gonna change a bit and ask a different question, different, but I'll go back to SLE later. But right now, my question is about our class ratios and our growth. One of the pieces of information boards used to see in board meetings was the waivers that we would put in when our class sizes grew. And so we no longer required to see that through TEA, but the district is keeping us updated, and so this Friday, I think we're trying to get a new rhythm, I don't think we have a rhythm down yet, this Friday we'll get an update. So I would encourage board members to look at that update, class size waivers, because that is another piece of information as we're thinking about overall our growth.
And as I looked at Scenario Three, something that was pretty glaring was, we do have quite a bit of blue there on, for the new school, for Elementary 30, while we're still above 100% on other schools like Larkspur and North. And what is, what is the reasoning behind keeping the new school so low? It was, I think, in the 60s for a while?
Typically, when we open a school, we don't try to open them Typically, when we open a school, we don't try to open them in that 70, 80% range because it's, they're gonna be full and you're either gonna have to move people very quickly again, or you end up with severe overcrowding very quickly. And so what we typically do is open them down in that 60% range and let them just grow from growth and add a manageable growth. It helps the campus, one, if they're at a smaller number to build community and program the culture at that campus versus having 700 day one. It's a whole nother, you know, set of issues for a campus principal and the campus, open them large like that. So we have typically built them lower, and plus, if you build them that much, you know, or fill them that much more, you're either gonna be taking a lot more from that other campus, the campuses that are feeding it, which usually will put them at a very low percentage. And so we typically have left those up higher and just, that's why the 120% typically will work. You have enough volume or students to be able to put them at the new campus and let that just grow instead of making it full day one.
And I, so I did go and look back at Comacho, Aiken, and those were opened at pretty much capacity, and so they filled up very quickly. And Larkspur, Tarvin, and North were allowed to sort of grow, but at the same time, it's now growing even more because of the rezoning, or even faster because of the rezoning. And so it's not clear, based on looking at the projections for Elementary 30, because even looking at the projections for the other schools that were opened, it showed them going to above 80, above 90. There was still something, but for 30, there's, it's still below 80 all the time for several years.
Yes.
And that's a concern that I have.
And it's, if you wanted to move people into it, you could, but then most likely they'll be moved back out as growth does get there. And so you're gonna, we're trying to stabilize, plus the people that you, we would recommend to be moved were just moved two years ago. And so we're trying to wait till we get to that number. Three years from now, we have new data. What is it really telling us? Do we need to move anybody, or can they just stay at North at that time? Because we don't know where we're gonna be 100% sure. We all know the projections, they're good planning tools, but the economy goes up and down, and if we have downturn in the economy, it could affect growth. There are a lot of variables, and so we just try to make it where we're not moving people just to fill a school right now.
So I wanna piggyback off of that because I have the same question, because I'm going back and looking at different rezones, and Shadai is right, we had certain schools open at almost capacity. And you're talking about sustainability, I get that. But where's that sustainability for the students that have been removed, like in Summerlin, that keep getting rezoned? And I guess for me, we see these numbers for Elementary 30, and I understand the growth, but I'm not seeing it on this chart that you're saying this growth is coming, like we're seeing it in the other areas. So what would a scenario like that look for us to try to push more kids to Elementary 30? And I think in most, in particular, what I'm talking about is Deerbrook is split up. I know we can't honor certain neighborhoods stay together, but you know, that area, there's certain, it's kind of split a little bit, it's that weird little area. What can we do, though? I wanna see what that scenario looks like, if possible, because on paper, it looks like we have room in 30. We're leaving Plain at capacity, which could possibly get portables, we're leaving North at capacity eventually, and Larkspur. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, if on paper, I see that we have Elementary 30, I don't see it getting in the red yet, I see there's room, I'm just trying to understand, why didn't we try to move more to this new school? Because these students haven't been rezoned as much as the other students have.
The, what I would say is, with some of these schools that you're talking about, we tried to leave them artificially low day one, but what you have is the, when you talk about the Larkspurs and some of these schools that open up full, there are different circumstances. You never have the same circumstances as you planned open schools. Comacho, at the time when Comacho was built, I believe Trish was on the board, we were going through an exercise to do what we did in 21. We were going through a zoning discussion to shuffle people down and not build schools. And I remember, I believe it was Will Striped Award present time, they say, okay, the community does not want this, how quick can you build a school because we're in trouble? And so we built that school very quickly. You have different circumstances that drive the conditions of your schools when you open, how the sizes. Yes, location is big, and plus, how far are we behind at all?
Just remind me, in the scenario one and two, did we not have some that filled up 30 more than this one?
I believe the, I'm trying to remember, scenario one, we did not, let me double-check the numbers because it's been a few meetings. I don't wanna quote it without looking. 30, basically through 2930, it was below 80%. Scenario two, it was through 2930. Every scenario. And I will say, we got, when the school was built, started construction, and you looked at the numbers last year, they were higher. And so it has, the downturn in the projections have an impact. I mean, I think they're projecting 400 students of growth this year to next year, and I question whether that's gonna be true or not, but at the same time, the projections, they've been dampening down the amount of growth this next couple of years. That's why you're seeing a lower percentage. If we were to look at what the projections were last year, it would be much higher because we had a need, you had to do something because Baghdad and Plain needed relief. That's the main driver for 30 right now. And so you can see the numbers, and we knew Larkspur was gonna be over 1,000 students without any relief. And so that's where pulling students out of Larkspur down the north was able to, and we didn't, we first were gonna move part of Summerlin, but that was not very popular, rightly so, because the majority of them had been moved two years earlier.
But they could also get moved again in three years, possibly. Nothing's guaranteed.
Four years.
But depending, that's all depending on the growth, right? That's what we had, our conversation we had. So if that area explodes as a possibility, they could get rezoned sooner than later?
I don't think you're gonna see the explosion that we have seen in the past because they're getting built out.
Also wanna remind us about the conversation Passa had with us about the charter schools that are going in very near that location. I think that they told us that's gonna have a significant impact, we don't know exactly what that is yet.
But aren't our projections, we did the moderate, that includes three to five charter schools, right? Accounted for that in that?
They did include the charter schools, for sure, I just think it's one of those that is new for us.
Right, oh, I know it's not, yeah.
For sure how many.
So I'd like to point out, my eagle-eyed desk mate here on slide 18 was showing that we have an elementary schools, but some are middle schools, they're not middle schools, they're elementary schools. So if we could get that updated and get that.
The future pattern.
Yeah.
Get the middle school or high school.
Yeah, so if we could get that, there's a few of them in there. If we could get that updated and sent to us, that would be great. So, thank you, Francesca. I started looking, I was like, yeah, there's this one too. Great. Yeah, I'd like to, let me see, I had a question, I distracted myself. I'd like to go back to, well, I had two questions. Let me just start with one, because I know we wanna share the mic. So scenario three, future planning on slide 16. So let me make sure I understand, or I'm reiterating what I'm hearing you say in the board meeting, is that, and I think you just said it two moments ago, that the plan was you didn't take some of these neighborhoods out, but you're letting the neighborhoods know now that if the growth continues, the next round of rezoning, these two neighborhood codes that I see here, Summerlin, I think is what you said, is gonna be moved out of North.
Somebody possibly needs to move to Plain.
Okay. Because when we were on the phone, you told me we were gonna make sure that was Summerlin, you were gonna let that community know?
Well, that's what we've done by doing this, is, and we've had the conversations at the forums, and, you know, they prefer not to be moved at all, but we know, as Dr. Dury mentioned, we have two charter schools in that vicinity that could have an impact. How much, we don't know, and will people moving in have as many kids? There's just a lot of variables.
There's a lot of variables.
That's why, if we don't move them now, maybe in three years, when we look at rezoning for 31 opening in 2028, we don't have to move them. They could stay there and just stay together. That's, would be ideal, but we just, they didn't wanna be pulled out now, and so this buys them time to, maybe they can stay, that'd be great.
Well, let me save my next questions for the next round.
And so to that point, we just, we feel it's only fair to be transparent and tell people ahead of time that this is a very real possibility. We are anticipating that that's going to happen in 2028. But again, like Jimmy said, as we continue to see updated numbers, that that could change, and we might not have to, but again, we wanted to just be upfront as early as we could.
I went to all of the rezone meetings, I believe, yes, I did. My question is, you know, I was there, I got to listen, you know, to parents, and a lot of the concerns was overcrowding and having sustainability for their kids. And I realize we're a fast growth district, rezoning's gonna be messy. Like, I'm honestly tired of hearing that because it is messy, but it doesn't need to be this messy. And so my question is, is how does that give stability to 1100 and 1115 with this, the possibility move? Is there another scenario that shows these two, this neighborhood not getting rezoned constantly? Like, I worry there're gonna be another Hazelwood. And I'm trying to understand, where is that stability for this community? And is there a scenario, because we're looking at Elementary 30 with, you know, I understand why you're keeping it low, but I know certain other scenarios showed sustainability for this neighborhood, so like, is there another scenario that gives them that stability they need so their kids aren't constantly getting rezoned?
Only way you can do that is if you move the entire Summerlin, but then you're gonna have issues at Baghdad and Plain because it's 500 students in Summerlin.
Right. And so I guess that's why I was asking earlier about Elementary 30 staying as low as it was and the surrounding schools being overcapacity and just trying to, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning behind it, because on paper, it just doesn't, it's not computing to me.
And if you moved all of them, of course, North will be very underutilized then, and then you're gonna have to do some move.
Move, right, and I know it's a process. I guess, I guess for me, and again, I'm in that weird section, my kids are gonna get rezoned all the time, I get, I hate it, it is what it is, but I guess, when I'm looking at this and I'm talking to my community members, my concern is just, how much stability can we give them? And I know we can't promise anything, but I still would like to just try to see and understand, just, that's all I'm trying to understand, just that push to the west.
I do think scenario three gives them the most potential stability in the long term because you move them now, they just moved. If you wait, they might not move at all. And so that's, to me, worth waiting to see what the data says in three years, or fourth year readjustment if you have to.
So going back to the utilization of Elementary 30, I did look at the early childhood communities for all the different schools, and I do see that about 80 students are projected to Beach 78, are projected to be in Elementary 30. There are some schools that are projected, and that's in the central North communities that are projected to go up to, say, 150, 180. Is there anything that precludes us from having a similar setup at Elementary 30 to provide relief for other schools in the North? I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Are you asking, is it possible to have an early childhood hub at 30?
Yes, to help with the utilization.
You could for a year or two, and then they'll all be moved to 26, in 26, to the childhood center on Halsey. And so you're moving the parent, moving them from one school, and then you're gonna move them to another one two years later. And so we actually talked about, do we move some, but because of trying to leave the parents, if they're closer to their current school, leave them there and not move them, and then move them again, was our thought.
Yeah, but these are, these are, like, we're talking about early childhood, so by the time Halsey's built, they would be kindergartners anyway.
Right. But if they have multiple, it just, they've gotta move to a new school in 24, and then they're gonna go back to their school for regular K5. Where if they have a home campus with pre-K, and that's where I think if you're trying to relieve some of the schools, most of them have their own pre-K at their campus, now the parents are leaving that home campus with, if they have siblings, to go drop them off somewhere else. And so we were thinking, leave them at their campus right now so it's easier on the parents.
Speaking of the early childhood center, I'm excited about it, I cannot wait. But my question is, so we know it's gonna start out at 482, right? And it's gonna create amazing possibilities for our early childhood students, but we also know that our three to five students are seeing an increase in special education. What happens when our Halsey, whatever we're gonna call it, early childhood, I'm not gonna name anything, okay? Nope. No, early childhood center opens, and it is at capacity. What happens to those students who qualify for SLE, ELE, who qualify for pre-K? We don't have that space. Where do they go? Are they gonna go to their home campus? And if that's the case, is there a possibility that these North campuses that we are providing relief for could potentially have in-house an early childhood center on their campus?
If you look at the numbers of the students, we're projecting to build for 600 students, which they don't get to 550 until 3132. And so if you're looking at, there's still discussion potentially of early childhood center at Leo. If there's repurposing of facilities, you have to have in the next bond to repurpose that facility. At some point, we'll have to have additional capacity for early childhood centers in the North if we don't wanna move them from Aiken, Knowles, the North Central campuses. There's enough capacity or projected students to actually, if Leo was to open, to fill that also.
So early, early childhood center off of Halsey is gonna provide relief for Larkspur, Tarvin, and North and Plain, is that it?
And Baghdad.
So what about the, okay, so, I mean, those along, because we, some of those we identified as special education hubs, and that's what's causing some of our current schools to be, you know, be in portables. So I guess my question is, I mean, I'm happy for it, but again, if we're seeing an increase of students either, you know, being identified, right? Because we have an amazing child find a fight right now. Again, where are we gonna put those kids? And I mean, because I'm thinking the North, I know the South, that's gonna be amazing, but we're not gonna bus a child from Tarvin all the way down to Fabian or wherever, that area. So I'm just trying to understand, looking for the future, because I, y'all know I'm gonna keep saying this until y'all just tell me to be quiet, but I was not a fan of the early childhood hubs moving to these overcrowded campuses to provide relief to those campuses. And my concern is, is we're gonna find ourselves in a situation and not anticipating a rise in early childhood students, and our center's gonna provide some relief, but I'm just worried we're gonna find ourselves in a situation where we're gonna be, end up utilizing our home campuses, and it's gonna cause more overcrowding than what we're anticipating. Because, I mean, we don't know those kids, three to five, you know, young, haven't been identified. I mean, we're talking four to five years out, there's a lot that can change.
Same token, if we were not to open that, it's still gonna impact campuses today. And so it's, right. And what we're also, if you have additional students, it's very possible, just like we do now, we look at work and we... we look at work and we put a community. We might have to do that if it grows more. I mean, we're not building for more than six hundred, and that's what we can, you know, put in the facility, it's just, we'll have to, if we start getting there, we're, we'll make arrangements to put them somewhere and take care of them. It's just our preferences and a facility that's built for it.
That's what I was looking for, and I, I honestly love, I'm excited for this early child center, but I'm also worried, I, I see, I mean, I can imagine what it's gonna do for a lot of our students. But I'm also, I know it's gonna be popular, and I, my concern is, again, we fill it up, which is gonna be amazing, six hundred kids is a lot, but then what happens to the students? Cuz we have an obligation for our bilingual students and our special education students, and just trying to make sure that our community is aware that this could be a potential reality. And our district is on top of it, we're not gonna deny students or anything.
Oh, no.
Correct, correct.
We will find a location.
We will absolutely serve students who, who do qualify for services. But as, as Jimmy hit upon it, I mean, we know that we're gonna have to have a hybrid model. So we have the early childhood center, and then we will need to have communities in other parts of our district. And we, through all of those different opportunities, we will make sure that every student who qualifies for services does receive the support that they need, absolutely.
I have questions in our, I may add on to that really quickly, in our conversations, the inclusive setting will remain a priority. So if there is not space at the early childhood center, and we do have to move more towards hubs, it's not going to be that those students served in special ed are just moved. We're gonna be very thoughtful about moving general ed students, as well as students that are served through an IEP together, so they still have the whole purpose of an early childhood community, and so that will remain a priority regardless of what happens with the growth.
I have feedback questions. The first is more of a request, I know you said you're gonna work on changing the format of how the capacity is done. Is there something that we can do to improve the notification? Because I know the campuses that have students coming in did not receive any notification that that was happening. So it was mostly just the campuses where students were being actually rezoned out. I know at my campus, we are having kids come in, and that wasn't a notification that we received, that we were having an increase in number. So is that something that we can change in the process as we go? Just so that if the campus is being affected in any way through a rezone, everybody at those campuses will be notified?
Definitely, that's, when we were doing releases, we notified any principal that had any impact and had meetings to review it with them, so they were aware. We'll do the same thing, if this is approved, we'll make sure each campus is communicated with, of what the decision was and what impact is projected for each campus, without doubt.
And, and I think I'm also hearing that as we're going through the process, making sure we're communicating out to families that are impacted, whether or not, it's not about that they're just, they're having to move, but they, their campus may be impacted because they're receiving more students.
Yes.
So we can definitely increase that communication. Thank you for that feedback.
And then on the, the feedback portion itself, we have an incredible amount of community feedback, which I will say thank you for, because that is not something that is common, it is not done in every district, and I really appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to the communities and hear what everybody has to say. Do we have that same feedback from staff, from the campuses that are going to be impacted? Do we have any, any data from staff on what their opinions are?
So we do not have a formalized process for that. We are definitely talking with principals, as Jimmy said, anytime we've had a scenario, we have been putting, we've met with principals, talked through, what does that look like? What is the impact? And answered any of their questions. But no, we do not have a, a process for, for the wider staff.
But forums are open to anybody, and so if staff had any feedback they wanted to give us, they're free to do that through Let's Talk, through the thought exchange, through attending forums, there's wide open to them.
Is there some benefit to having, hearing from them directly as a group, as opposed to their thoughts getting lost in the general public?
I'm, I'm pretty confident that if principals were hearing that, they, they'd certainly provide us that feedback, and we'd provide opportunity if that was necessary. We did not hear any of that.
Trying to share the mic. Okay, Elementary thirty-three, that's been a big topic, okay? Like I said, I went to all the rezone meetings, and I went to the long-range planning meeting. And I'll be honest, I understand why we have it on there. Here you go, Bruce. I understand, because we're trying to give those neighborhoods, especially Cold Springs, Hazelwood, bless you, we're trying to give them an opportunity to understand, right, what's long-term. However, my, my concern is, is we're giving them kind of a false hope, because, yes, we have six point five million dollars set aside for elementary school land, but that all has to go through Bond Steering Committee, correct? To decide what gets allocated for money for purchase of Land thirty-three?
The, the way the land was done from December twenty twenty meeting, the board was given, what they were gonna do is move all the land money from the two thousand and seven bond into the twenty seventeen, and then spend it down to where we just had twenty seventeen. And that's what they've done, and when you look at the number of elementary sites we currently have, Elementary thirty's being built, we have four additional sites that are elementary sites that have been bought with elementary money, so we're up to thirty-five when you're looking at, if you're looking at numbers. The trick is, they're not in exact location, and of course, numbers change as we get new projections each year, where the school's gonna be located. So, I mean, Travisol's number thirty-two has been thirty, thirty-one, I think it was twenty-nine once, but it changes, and so when we buy sites numbered school, that's not necessarily the school site. And so, we've got to really look at relabeling the school numbers just to say six or seven elementary sites, because we know we're gonna need one here, but what number it's gonna be until we build it, we don't know what number it's gonna be. And so that's the challenge we have. But it's, the funding is still available to buy additional land sites, because if you truly look at it, we've bought thirty-three, thirty-two, thirty-one, because those sites, we have four elementary sites were bought with elementary monies, and so they're just in the wrong location. We've bought enough sites, cuz we have thirty-four sites now in the district that we own.
And I understand that, but when we're doing a rezone, right, this is part of the long-range plan, correct, second step, or whatever step? I guess my question is, I know we have those four properties, but those four properties aren't anywhere in that rezone, right? This is basically where we saw where we're gonna need the need. And so, it's about process and system. And so, I get what you're saying, cuz we bought them at different times, but right now, we're looking at thirty-three, and we don't have land there, right? We, there's no land there. So I know that the last land purchase we did was, cuz the area's exploding, and it's expensive to live here. I, I mean, I'll be surprised if you can find what was allocated in the bond item, six point five million for land. But we, I'm, I'm guessing we're not gonna find six point five million in that area?
That's what, once we identify, if we identify a site, how much it's gonna be, it will go to the bond oversight.
That's what I'm trying to understand, so I guess for me...
Hold on, hold on a second, that's not necessarily true, because remember when the bonds are authorized, they're authorized for the construction of buildings, the purchase of land, that we don't say they're authorized for purchasing land for Elementary thirty-three. We, we say they're authorized for the purchase of land. We have over thirty million in two thousand and seventeen bonds for land purchases. So, so the money is there, I don't know that we have to go to the bond oversight committee. We like to be transparent, and we like to try to make sure that we're expressing to the community what we're trying to do. But to Jimmy's point, I mean, we already have elementary sites all the way to thirty-five. So if you technically look at what's in seventeen, that has purchase of land for thirty-four on, all the way through forty. And so, part of the problem is that in two thousand and seven, for instance, when they put that land money in, land was selling by the acre. Now land is selling by the square foot, and so it's very difficult to plan. We're fortunate to be in the position that we're in, that we have enough elementary land money, or land money in general, in those bonds to purchase land for sites that we need as we go forward. But I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we have to go to bond oversight committee for land purchases.
I, I get what you're saying, but when I go look at the bond oversight chart, and I go look at past things, it does say Elementary thirty-four, thirty-five, but, you know, an average, our community is not gonna have access to the information I have, and so it does look kinda weird, like, all of a sudden, you're just not gonna take this, you know, extra bond money to approve land we don't have. And I think that's where my issue is with this. Like, I get what you're saying, Bruce, I totally understand, but I personally just don't like it. I, I think it just looks kinda weird, because I know you and I have had this conversation, I brought it up at the beginning, and, I mean, I was at that first meeting, and we had parents asking, well, who buys the land, and what, what does this look like? And there was a lot of misinformation being spewed from everywhere. And so I guess for me, I'm just, I need to think about that, because I, I see the line item, y'all pointed the line item out for me, six point five million. We look at the next line item, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six. And I get what you're saying, Bruce, but if we're gonna be building in this area, and we don't technically own land there for me, I would assume that it would go to bond steering, because it's a whole different process.
I think what we need to do, just so the bond oversight is aware what happened in twenty twenty, how the process was to move the money in twenty seventeen, spend it down, and then, so they're aware, and they understand, we're already past thirty-three, actually. And so, it's just a matter of educating them so they're aware of what was done back in twenty twenty, and where we're at today.
So that's what I was trying to get at, because I feel like if that information was communicated earlier, like, a lot of my, like, doubts and stuff would have been cleared, and I know that, I mean, we have, it's, I just, I, I just wish we could be a little more clear and honest, I guess, and I would really like for you to please update your bond steering committee, because I know there's lots of questions, cuz those are who, that's who's been reaching out to me.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know, we go back to them for approval, but we need to educate them, because it happened three years ago, and most people weren't part of this process, so just educate them so they're aware, and they can answer questions out there. I think it's the important part.
I think words matter, and I want us to be very careful with, trust came out earlier, and honest came out right now. I want us to be very careful of what we say about the work that we do. We are very transparent in our process. I know when you came on the board, Anna, we didn't have that sheet at all. We put that sheet together to make sure that all of that money was laid up very transparently for the community. Every time we do something and make a change, we either take it to bond oversight, or we bring it here, and we lay out exactly what we're doing. So I just want us to be very careful with our words, please.
And I am so grateful that the board made, you know, helped guide that decision. But again, I, I can't help how I feel. And I, as a board member, am very passionate about this, y'all know that. So I guess for me, as a board member who has to vote on this, and I have to answer my community, I would appreciate, I, I wanna have that trust, but I can't, when I'm getting told different things, and so that's just where I'm at, and I understand what you're saying, but I think it's gotta be both ways.
If there are no further questions, I'd like us to, first, I'd like to thank you all. Thank you for this process, thank you for answering all those questions. Thank you for laying out all of that information for us. I think we have a board where that transparency is really important, and I think you have done a wonderful job in laying that all out for us. And so, thank you for giving us all of that information, answering our emails and our questions before, and then being willing to do it again here for us. So I appreciate you all. And if there are no further questions, I'd like us to take a ten-minute break.
Madam President, before we do leave, I do wanna say one thing. I've been very lucky to work with this wonderful lady for the last seventeen years, and she's retiring in a couple of weeks, so I do wanna say thank you very much for everything you've done. She's done, she's been a great player, team player with us in doing these maps and zoning and everything else she's helped with in the district, and so I really thank her, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. We, I know we asked for maps, and, and A, and A B, and A B C, and, and we run out of letters of the alphabet, and we start, so thank you, Marty. You have been so wonderful to work with, and you will be very missed.
I'm the lucky one.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's eight forty-six and we're back from our break. And we're going to move over to item, to our operations, item nine C one, our discussion of our district-wide intruder detection audit report. And that's going to be Brian Miller. And Brian Miller. Brian Miller. Sorry, Brian.
Apologize, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Gearing, thank you. So have, have I already been introduced what I'm talking about? Okay, good. District Intruder Detection. Okay, I'm here. So I apologize, I'm going to read because this is kind of a scripted thing, so just know. So the safety and security of our students and staff is our top priority. Beginning in September of this year, Texas Education Agency has conducted twenty-one intruder detection audits at our campuses. The audits test whether a campus is accessible to an unauthorized individual. This audit seeks to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked and provides an opportunity to create a safer learning environment. Of the twenty-one audits, we had a state finding at three of our schools. At two of the campuses, one exterior door was not closed and properly locked. And at the other campus, the auditor gained unauthorized access to the building. As a result of the three state findings, all staff either have been or will soon be retrained at those campuses to keep exterior doors closed and locked. We acknowledge that parents and community members are interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. Specific details of the intruder detection audit will be discussed in this evening's closed session and were shared with our safety and security committee last week on December sixth. We continue to work closely with our safety and school safety and security committee for feedback and support on best practices to provide a safe learning environment for our students and staff while maintaining best practices for learning. The intruder detection audits are one of the many actions we take to ensure our schools are safe. We know that this work does not end and we commend our campuses for their diligence and work keeping our students and staff safe.
No, I just, I do, I, I know, I just wanted to thank you for, for talking about, you know, the, the partnership and the stakeholder with the safety and security committee, taking this information to them, getting feedback, making the systems better, making the structures better and our schools safer. So it's a lot of work and I see it happening because I get to sit with Shaw Day, I get the honor of seeing that and Gloria Nell in the committee and get to see a lot of good work. So thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
We're going to move on over to our next agenda, item nine C two, our purchasing annual cooperative report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board of trustees, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we come to you with an annual compliance, to be compliance with Texas Education Code, section forty-four dot zero three three one. Each year, each district is, any time they spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars with a purchasing cooperative in a local agreement, they are required to report to the board any membership fees or extra fees associated with that interlocal agreement. So tonight, we bring you, we have three fees. Technically, we have two, but we have three, just to be on air on the side of transparency. The Central Texas Purchasing Alliance is actually technically not a co-op, but it is something we use very similar to. So we went ahead and added it on here. But there's a hundred and fifty dollar annual fee to be a member of that. The Texas Association of School Boards, the Buy Board, very well-known throughout the state. While there is no fee to use or be a member of the Buy Board, whenever we buy vehicles, there is a four hundred dollar fee per vehicle. So whenever we do buy vehicles, we put as many on one P O as possible because it's all on one P O. But so since it's not a, a membership fee, but technically it is a fee, we just, on the air of transparency, we put that on there and show that there is that fee. And then the Texas Comp Charter of Public Accounts, which is the, the state purchasing cooperative, they charge a hundred dollars to be a member of that for each year. So just in order to be compliant, we save well more than we, we spend to be a member of these. And the rebates we do receive from, from the Buy Board is, is more than anything on the four hundred dollars. So we do, they do give back a portion of what is sold to the member districts. So just wanted to bring it to your attention to be in compliance and that, with that, I'll, then we'll happen to answer any questions.
I don't think we have any questions there. And since you're next up on the agenda, item nine C three, you want to talk to us about these twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget pre-assumptions and our economic outlook and budget update.
I'm going to do my best. I'm going to try to at least be about two, two or three minutes less than Jimmy and them up here as we go through our budget process, but. I don't know. So tonight, we want to talk real briefly about the budget. We kind of called it pre-assumption because technically in the past, we would come to the board and we'd bring you the assumptions in January. But we really never had an opportunity to kind of sit down and get kind of some of your feedback on those assumptions where you're just kind of asked to approve those in, in January and go forward. So I kind of wanted to go through a brief presentation, give you, give a couple of highlights, give you some of the things that we're thinking about, or, or our assumptions we're planning to bring in January. Just let me know if you feel, hey, same train of thought, what about this? And then we can have the, we can take that into consideration as we come back in January and we really kind of jump into the budget process. So tonight, we're going to, we'll get the budget timeline, some economic outlook. We will have a very in-depth and very short legislative update. We will have the pre-assumptions on some topics that we're talking about, some administrative parts. Not giving you an idea where we're at administratively in the budget process. Kind of where we ended twenty-two, twenty-three, and then there's an opportunity for some questions, answers and discussions. So we'll jump right in. Here's our, our timeline. The items in, in red are anything related to budget workshops, compensation plan design, approvals, et cetera. The one in, at tonight, or just do the timeline. Kind of go through January, February, March, April, May and June with the adoption of the same goal. Last time we did, I was up here, we did talk, or the question was raised about potentially changing or tweaking the compensation timelines. So the teachers will be able to know exactly what raise the board would be adopted prior to them having to turn in or submit, or if they wanted to submit, resign or to go look at a district elsewhere. So what we did is after the meeting, we didn't change the schedule on here. But what we did decide to do was change the date, push the date out when teachers have to notify the district. So we accomplished the same thing without really changing our, our timeline. But it, hopefully, we feel that serves the same purpose and that, okay, I guess, appreciate that. But tonight, we'll do, talk about the high level, January, we kind of go into the normal, what's our assumptions, any some board parameters. Then we'll work our way, February, March. If there is any legislative update in that time, we will, we will jump on that. At this stage of the game, we're just going to go with current law. And anything else would be, would be, we'll just, if it happens, it happens. And then we'll go through our normal process with, with the board being, budget being adopted in, in June. This economic outlook, kind of an idea of what we're looking at. First and foremost, the Fed met yesterday, interest rates stayed the same. So we are projecting somewhere between three and a half, four percent interest on our revenues for next year. Or currently, we're earning about five and a half. So I do expect the late spring, the Fed to start to reduce, lowering the rate. They'll probably do it at a quarter point, potentially a half at the absolute max at a time. So for the next, for this, the next fiscal year, we'll, three and a half, four percent, we should be well within what, it'd still be conservative. Taxable value property, and the reason I put taxable value and not property value is I want to clarify, we're looking at an increase of about seven percent. But the gross values amount is not going to be anywhere near seven cents, probably actually going to decrease. But since most of the, our property value is based on rooftops, you still have home values that are still playing catch-up over the last four or five years. So even though you, if you have a five hundred thousand dollar home, you still may be taxed at three hundred and thirty thousand because you're capped at ten percent a year. Well, if it drops to four hundred next year, you're still going to go from three thirty to three sixty, or three sixty-three. So that would be taxable value growth. So that's what we're, we're, we'll build our budget on that. If we, we do get preliminary certified numbers up at the end of April, so if there is any change, we've already reached out to the CAD. They gave us the best information they could give this early in the process. But since it was pretty easy with our home, our values being so, so residential. Legislative update, really, there was no school finance bill passed. I'm speaking to the choir on that category. There was property tax reduction, Senate Bill Two, that, that has gone into effect. That was actually on the budget amendment tonight on the debt service side. We changed those revenues around. They have just gone through four special sessions. I'm hearing rumors of possibly a fifth in February, but when I, when it's called, I'll, I'll, I'll believe it then, but who knows? So normally, you know, we would have this budget all set. This would be the easy year, right? No legislative session, this would be, so didn't quite work out that way. But like I said, if anything does change, they did have the school safety, they did increase a little bit, not near what was originally, or not originally, but what had, was on the table at the end. So we will take that, we will take that and use that information. And then if anything changes, we will come back and add to that. But we're just going to base it on what we know right now on current law. So our plan is to come back in, in January and kind of start our, our base level assumptions. Modify throughout spring as more information becomes available and then budget adoption in June. So the board adopts the assumptions. Our, our goal is to bring it on January eighteenth. Again, continue to monitor any legislative bills that come forward if anything does happen. And then if that does, we will update February through May. So we do have some warning signs, some assumptions ahead, just, you know, remember it's early in the process. But this isn't our first rodeo doing, doing our budget. So what we're looking at this next year is maintaining our tenet rate of ninety-four percent in the budget. After the first two six weeks, we're actually a little bit higher than that. But typically, as each six weeks goes, the tenet rate typically goes down a little bit. And so we're going to keep it at ninety-four. After the four six weeks, if it still looks fairly solid, we may come back and adjust that in the assumptions at that time. But as of right now, we feel solid with ninety-four percent. Wanted to continue to use the moderate growth model. We had had some discussion between moderate and, and slow. Overall, district-wide, there was a two hundred student difference between the two, so it was not very, it wasn't, the, the difference wasn't drastic. And then since it is passing each year, and this is a year they have done a major, they've done a significant correction, if you want to call it, or moved down or lower that, and that number's forty-two, nine, twenty. Last year, we budgeted forty-three, five, forty-three. So we do reduce that a little bit. And obviously, with that, we'll reduce our revenue. But if that number going more toward actual, that should also reduce some associated expenditures based on the staffing models, based on campuses enrollment. Our assumption or projecting, we've always started with a two percent compensation increase. If you had talked to me about three, four months ago, I'd have talked to my staff about maybe starting at three. But we're going to go back and go, we want to stay at two just because there was no legislative change on that piece. Again, it's always easier to go up, but that's what we'll, we'll try to build that into our, that's our base model and, and make adjustments necessary. We want to lower the amount that we use in the budget for teacher salaries. So I want to clarify, in case someone's just happened to be listening to this presentation and not paying a hundred percent attention, I did not say we're going to reduce teacher salary, okay? I said we are going to reduce what we budget for teacher salary. And I want to not spend a lot of time on that because I want to come back to it in the second or third to the last slide. I want to explain what that does and, and what, what that allows us to do. We have an elementary number thirty, just real high level. Usually, it's about a one point five million. You got a principal, an AP, a council nurse librarian, you've got custodial staff, you've got a front office staff, you've got air conditioning, heating bills. So in general, that's what we start with, one point five, as we get more information with square footage and stuff from Jimmy and his staff. We will update that number, but typically, a one point five typically covers it. And then a budget parameter currently is a deficit of, of three percent. And our, our goal is to continue that at the, at the same level. Even though last year, we, the budget we adopted was only about one and a half percent deficit. We didn't use the full three. And, and our goal isn't to use the full three, it's just to have it there in case it's needed. So review the historical data, modify more data as possible. So the next three slides are strictly cut and pasted or copy and paste from the past of presentation. I wasn't going to rehash the whole presentation for you. But if you look at our ten-year enrollment, you know, we steadily gone up, had a few dips, you had COVID there in twenty twenty-one. We have steadily started to, but not near quite at the, at the pace that we had before. So our number, our enrollment number as of snapshot, or not quite snapshot, but October fourth of this year was forty-two thousand, five, eighty-nine. And so if you remember that number before, I think it was 42,920 is what we're looking at budgeting for in this next, in the next budget year. So if you look at our past moderate growth scenarios, or low, moderate and high, our low this year would have been 43,190s. 43,423 is what we use. I said 43,543 because we did add four sections of pre-K at the end of, later in the game, so that was, made that 43,543. So this year, October number was 42,589, and we're looking at 42,920 is our starting number with our, our budget presentation. Then here's the low, moderate and, and high, so we're, we're sticking up with the moderate. And one of the things was, again, it was only a 200 student difference. And most, a lot of the committees that are out, the rezoning committee, the, all the other committees, this whole process, they've been using moderate too. So in an era of trying to be, ensure consistency, we kept that. So just kind of give you an idea where we are on the administrative side. So last December 4th, or last, the last week, all the recurring requests, we kind of broke it up between recurring and non-recurring items. So any recurring item was due December 4th. Then we, on December 6th, we sent those back to those respective chiefs that those fell under, and then those chiefs are now actually going through and ranking those. And those are due on Monday, the 18th, and then we will take that ranking, meet as a chief at the cabinet level, and we will take all those and rank. And have all the positions there, and these are not, these are anything that's recurring. So it could be positions, it could be software, it could be whatever. We're all arguing, or we're all trying to get the same pot of money here. In the January, we will start the non-recurring request. So if you have a one-time request, you know, I need to buy this thing, it's only going to be one time in the budget. And then what we'll do is, we'll get that list and we'll have, so if anything happens legislatively, we'll have everything already ranked and prioritized. And if we get $2 million more, a million dollars more, we just go down the list until we get to the million, and that's where we stop. And then what we'll do is, like we did last year, is we'll continue, we'll monitor the 23, 24 budget. And if it does come to the point in the same situation as where we were last year, where we have extra funds, and we have, whether it's vacancies or whatever reason. We can actually look at some of that one item list and say, you know what? These are items that we, some of these we can get within four weeks, let's go ahead and order that on this year's budget and get that taken care of before this year comes to a close. So trying to just maximize the monies that we have, and again, I want to, that goes into one of the next, actually goes into this slide, so we're going to jump right in on this one. So this is a lot of numbers, I got you, so we're going to focus on the four red circles. So if you look at the original budget, and then the original expenditures in that, that first red circle. When we first adopted the budget, we adopted $444 million and change as the original budget. The final budget on the expenditure side was 472 million. But if you look at our actual, it was 441. It was 3 million less than what we originally budgeted in the beginning. So there's a lot of reasons why these numbers, why, you know, you would think it would go the opposite way, right? You say, well, I thought you'd start out here, then as your amendments would go through, it would be more accurate. Well, I'll give you a couple of reasons, refresh your memory on a cut. One was that recapture is a 10 million of that, so that was a big piece of it. The other piece was, in June, we came, there was a new GASB pronouncement that we had to account for any lease that we had, mainly technology. We've had leases forever. We put, if it's for our classroom, we put it in function 11 where it's always been. This GASB pronouncement now said, hey, if it's a lease and it's more than one year, it doesn't matter what it's for, you have to put it in function 71. So if you remember, we did a budget amendment in June for $6 million, just as a placeholder, because we really had no idea what that was. And so that was 6 million of that, so the 10 and the 6 gets you right at 16 million, which is the difference of that, you know, explains the big chunk of that difference. But one of the things that I mentioned earlier was, we wanted to reduce the salary or the number that we were using for our, our teacher salary. Because we're using about 25, 3,000 higher than what the actual average teacher salary throughout the district is. So we want to reduce that by about 1,000 this year, that should get us about $3 million more room in our budget. So we've had some good conversations this year, and I think I mentioned this before, and if I didn't, I'm going to mention it to you now. One of the things we've talked about, Dr. Gearing, myself and Sarah as well, and at the administrative level was, you know, we want to do, and it even goes back to last year when changing some of the health insurance, how we did that too. But we've always strived, we want to do what's best for our students. That's our ultimate goal, everything, it's always been what we wanted to do. And so we have all these requests, we go through all this information, and Dr. Gearing or the cabinet, whatever, we have to say yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, and then we end, and this is where we're going to cut it off. And some, some people got what they wanted, some people didn't get what they wanted. And then the end of the year, we have 10, 12, 15 million dollars of fund balance, and it just makes, it's like, that's a little frustrating because we could have done more of these programs, or we could have enhanced some of these things, or done some of these things that we said no. And then at the end of the day, we have all this money that goes into the fund balance. Well, it's nice to have money, and if we didn't have a healthy fund balance, then okay, that would be okay, but we have a healthy fund balance, it's not. So what we want to do is, we want to tighten that a little bit, still be conservative, but tighten it a little bit. So we know that the bulk of our money is actually going to be able to go to the programs to benefit our students that we need in our, in our district, instead of no, 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 then add, add, add. So that's kind of what that philosophy is, that's kind of why we're reducing that, that thousand dollars I mentioned before, the amount. I said 1,000, we want to reduce the salary piece a little bit, so that we're able to get much more closer at the end of the year. Almost to the point to where we get down to the point to where at the end of the year, we're either adding a million, or, or we're a million under. And keep it really tight line in that, so that way we know that all the monies that we have are going to our, to our, to the needs of our district. So that's kind of a modification to maybe some what we've done in the past, but we just want to get to the point where if a request is made and the need is there, and we're able to meet that need, instead of saying no to it and then adding money at the end. So we're going to be a little tighter on a lot of things as far as our estimates. And obviously, I have a great staff that watches that every month, and we get those reports starting in, in January, we, we, we track it. So hopefully, we, you know, we'll, hopefully, we still have some at the end, as a little extra, this may not be quite as much as we have had in the past. So I just want to get you, just kind of briefly explain that to you, just so you understand if that's, if you see something, make things a little bit different in the future, or if you, if you see some different estimates, that's kind of where that's coming from. And that's, well, the ultimate goal is behind it is to, is to be able to say yes to some more things or requests. And just have a little tighter budget. So one of the things we've asked, just want to get your ideas. You don't have to provide it tonight, you can email us at any time. But you know, if there's any areas of the budget, as we really begin to delve into this process, are there some things that the board believes that maybe, are areas that you want us to maybe emphasize more, or bring to the presentations to align more with the districts? We'll start with the district strategic plan, if there's things of that nature, we want to be aware of that, so we can incorporate those into our, our presentations and have those conversations at the administrative level. So with that, that kind of concludes the presentation, but I will definitely want to open it up. Are there any comments on the last slide, or any questions about anything in the presentation or the budget process?
I'll start. So I guess it's more of a comment for, like, the slide for 18. Just going to speak to what I know, special education. I know, like I had mentioned previous presentations tonight, we are identifying students at a higher rate than before. And we also have students with special, very special needs. And so I know our district's done a really great job at trying to recruit. I know that this is a problem across the state of Texas in regards to special education positions. My concern is making sure we're staying in compliance, and I know, I know I'm staying in compliance. But we have an obligation, an illegal obligation as well, to ensure that students are getting evaluated within the 45 days. But most importantly, they're getting their annual art on time. And so my, what I would, I guess it's going to have a conversation online, is I'm looking at those positions in between. Our diet technicians, our art specialists, our behavioral coaches in particular as well. I believe we have four or five in the district, Ms. Waltman, I can't remember. Five district, and so we, I know many of us board members have had some parents reach out to us about some of concerns with behaviors in the classroom. And my, I want to make sure that going forward, that we are ensuring those specialists at that position, that are not, they are student-based, but they're in that little, I, the way I view it is like campus, that middle part, and then cabinet. It's this position right here, because I know these individuals are being stretched thin. And so when you have a district, it's bigger than ours, and I'm just using behavior coaches as an example. You have five of them trying to help provide support and services, and most importantly, mentor those teachers at the local level. And I know those teachers at the local level are just so overwhelmed. And so for me, I would really like to make sure that that compliance piece for special education, we are staying on top of it. So we don't have TEA coming in here, and like, well, why are your evaluations over this amount? Or we, or we have parents, you know, coming in legal, and then we have to do a whole nother set of, you know, legal fees and whatnot. So that, for me, as a board member, and I know I'm one of seven, that's what I would really like to see.
Okay. No, we're always looking at maximizing everything from the local revenues, strategizing with the federal monies that we have, SHARs.
You know, I was going to ask about that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and you know, tomorrow, I will find out if there is, you know, that, how much that gets reduced, or what is proposed to be reduced. And we're going through that process in a separate, working, our, our, work with, with HHS-C, working with our third-party vendor, working with, had a good conversation with one of the largest school districts in the state of Texas today. So there, everybody's getting aligned and on, you know, there's power in numbers to hopefully not have to have or incur a reduction in that, that piece. Because that money, even though we, you know, there's two ways to handle that money, but at the end of the day, it's really all ends up being the same. You can either say, yes, it's, we use all that money for special ed, or we don't, but it still funds everything that you, allows you to fund. And so that would be an additional cut. And so our goal is, you know, hopefully to not have to undergo that, and we'll fight that as, you know, to the best of our ability. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, hey, can we strategize and maximize the funds that we do have? And we get all the little shells on the table, and how do we, you know, we work it all out? And then at the end of that, we have to make some hard choices sometimes, and, you know, and what's our focus on? So I appreciate your comments. I've had, met with Ms. Waltman like twice in the, the last week, she's probably tired of me already. But we are definitely looking, you know, to maximize what we have and make sure that we can meet the needs, whether it be at that, that mid-level, or if it's someone to help out with making arts done on time or leading that process. It, it is. It is being discussed, and it is on our minds as well, so.
Back, I'm not going to get into it, because that's a whole different discussion, but can the board get an update about the SHARs information that's been coming out? Because this is going to impact our budget, and I, just so that the board members are aware what's on the front.
Yeah, I will, since I don't expect, I don't know what time I'm getting to the final piece, tomorrow, next week, before we, on the 18th? As long as we have one going out, do we have one going out next week? Yeah, I will have a recap of where we are on that, that one. Not a problem. Any other? Trish is over there writing the, yeah.
So a couple of questions, but I'll try to just ask one or two, and then we'll share the mic, and I'll come back. One of them kind of piggybacks onto Anna's questions on special education funding. It would be, I think, helpful for the board to have a better handle of these expenses in what areas? There's a group of trustees from Texas that'll be going up in this January, February, to talk to DC as idea is coming up again. And I don't think we need to go to DC, we've talked about as a legislative committee, we can just start reaching out now. But if we know what numbers we're asking for what, and that goes for everything like for evaluations, for how SHARs does impact our funding. Because those are areas that we could ask for those increases. And to Anna's point, these are compliance, these are things that are, are federal funding. And so I think it's important to know where those dollars are from, and how much we're actually spending in that area. I think it's also important to know the police department that we're trying to set up, to be able to continue to keep an idea on that funding piece for the board. Because that's one that's going to be ramping up and, and growing. And so I'd like to be able to keep, keep an eye on those costs as well. Overall, and you know this, I've asked you about this, we, we have, what, 87% of our budget is salary? And less than 1% of that is our central administration. And I said, okay, well, what's the magic number? And you say, well, it just, it depends, right? Because there's so many different variables. But I would like to have, as a board, better understanding of, as a district, how are we balancing these things? Because I would like to see everybody get an increase in pay, I'm sure they all would like that. I also would like to see more people, and I'm hearing that too. So let me just go into now the next area, you know, Anna started with special education, but from everything from transportation, from our HR, fine arts, CNS. There are areas where we hear of need for bodies, right, to, to help and support our staff. I know we run our administration lean on purpose, and we've done that as a board, but then again, isn't our administration supporting our staff? So at what point does too lean get to be an issue? And so it's just trying to find this balance.
Where's that sweet spot?
And so any information you can give us as we continue these budget discussions? Because I struggle between, wouldn't it be great if we could give everybody compensation, but, and, and, and more and more? And then also, don't we also need people, though, to help do this? And I'm, I'm trying to figure out that balance. One of those things I also would like to make sure as a board, we keep on the radar. I was, I was in, at an ESPEC hearing, they're talking about Chapter 280, that they're going through a redesign. And as they were discussing, they were talking about studies that they had looked at, and they said, when you do late hires of teachers, it negatively impacts student outcomes. So I've reached out to Carrie Lynn and asked, okay, so then how do we help do that? One is to release those early releases positions. And so my other question is, you know, is HR able to release these early released positions? Are we getting all these early released positions? And so that brings me to the question on slide number 11. Because we were projecting a revised moderate growth model of 42,900. And we know that PASA has, has told us this before, that they are giving us kind of the bigger picture overall in the system. But what that doesn't always tell you is how that looks in the classroom. And so given the information we just had, ESPEC talking about how important it is to get those early release positions out, so you get them in those classrooms, that helps with your student outcomes. And we know that the classroom projection down is, is a bit challenging. I, I would just like to know as we go forward, how we can help kind of balance this? Because it seems to be crucial in the coming days, especially when we know there's a, a supply issue for our teachers out there, so.
And we call that doing the early release to get the blue chippers, the blue chips, you know, the, the high recruits, the, the best of the best, if you will, that's, you know, now we're with you on that. You know, typically in the past, you know, we were able to do a lot of things, just pick a number and hire, because we knew the kids are going to be here in August. And that has since slowed, so we've got to get a little more scientific, but you're right. It's important for us to nail that down a little bit more, maybe not be quite as conservative on that number, just to try to go out and get the best. Because it's even, even in normal circumstances, you want to get the best, but right now, it's even less out there. So that might be a, a discussion that we can have, maybe to, to be a little more, just acknowledge the understanding of, of the current situation. But no, definitely.
I was thinking about those positions that were funded by ESIR to help with learning, student learning. And those funds being, not necessarily being available at the same levels that they were before. And just seeing how we can continue to support the learning gaps and losses that the students need. Just whatever we can do to find those funds.
Yeah, this is going to be an interesting year with, we have the ESIR ending, so we have a lot of campuses that got used to having these positions. And so now we have to, as an administrative team, have the conversation, are we able to? We, we have them all, we have them from the high level rolling into the budget, but we have to have the discussion, is do they all roll in, or what, what does that go? And I know that the chiefs worked real hard with their staffs, because I know, I've seen what was submitted, and there's just different variations. They have worked real hard to kind of figure out what is, what do we really need, what do we want? And we have to have, we'll have those conversations over the next month of January. But, and what, every district in our, around us is, is now having to, you know, you've had three years of, of being able to do some, some, some pretty cool things that you maybe may not have been able to afford. And now we're having to, okay, what, what do we maintain, what, what do we keep that we feel is important enough that we, we keep on our, with our local funds going forward? And what do we do, or do we, can we do something similar, but have it maybe in a different manner, just because of that? So those are the conversations that we're having in December and January at the, at the cabinet level. But yes, it is a, it's a real situation, and. But yes, it is a, it's a real situation and there will be some creative and tough decisions that will be have to be made, that we look, look at these. But we definitely want to make sure that, you know, we're look, we're starting at the campus level first, what, what did they need first?
And I know we've talked about this, but that healthcare cost will continue to, to kind of have that at the same time. We have that compensation discussion. When I first got on the board before, back in 2013, they would give us, with the, the compensation discussion, you'd see the teacher raise. And then a couple of months later, then we'd have the health discussion. And then there'd be like, oh yeah, and the cost of, of premiums are raising. I was like, wait a minute, cause you just did, you did all this work. And so just keeping those together, I think are really important.
Those together and.
Thank you, yes.
Last thing you wanna do is get people excited about this percent raise, then all of a sudden. Try to keep it all together so you can see the big picture and know what that means. Make sure that people understand a 3% raise of the $60,000 salary is oftentimes much more than a 7, 8, 9, 10% raise of a health insurance premium. So keep it percent, but also have the, the number with it too, so everybody's on the same page and understand. But no, it is, it's a, that's a tough balance.
It is.
We strive.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, the, the goal you've set out for yourself and your team is quite, uh, heavy. Because you're, you're trying to reduce this margin and, and, and still come in accurately. And I was just talking, Trish and I were looking at the numbers and we're like, you are landing the plane really close. And so thank you, because you wanting to get it even closer in means we can make these other things happen. So thank you and your team for all your work. It means so much.
And one thing, let me add, because I, I just, since you mentioned that, I did, remember that I did fail to mention this on that slide. We did give a, a one-time raise without doing a budget amendment last year. So we came in at three, you could almost make the argument, we, we really had eight. Cause that was about $5 million for that one-time payment. And so just, I, I forgot to mention that. And you sparked my memory when you said that. And so we, we just want to get to the point where we can, again, just narrow it, not too close, but still allow us to maybe add, keep some of these ESIR positions or keep, do some of the things that we've been able to, to do to maintain or, or even add if it's, you know, some of the things that Anna had mentioned, or trustee Smith, my apologies, had mentioned with special ed side. So those things of that nature. You know, at, at the end of the day, you know, at, at what we do is, is, you know, it's like, it's like a recipe. You have all these ingredients and you gotta, you gotta get the balance just right to make the product that you want. And, you know, or the offerings that you want for our campuses or for our district. And that's what we, and that, that's, we work the magic. We do our best, we've got a great team. And I'm not talking just the business office, I'm talking, we have a great cabinet, we have a great chiefs, you know, we have a great board. So we have those conversations and it's, it's tough. Some are easier than others, but we just, we do our best, put our nose to the ground and, you know, we're, we're excited about what we do. We, I mean, it's, it's crazy, no one likes what we do in our world, no one likes to go to poor ballet, you know, where the numbers are. But it's our, it's our world, but we, we love it, so.
I, I do just want to remind us that in reality, ESIR is going away. The state has not provided any additional funding and there will be some difficult decisions to make in this budget cycle. So I just want us to make sure that we're ready for that process as we go through. Pete does a great job of, of making sure that we can do as much as we can, but there will be some tough decisions this budget cycle.
Thank you, Pete.
All right, thank you.
All right, it is 9:26 PM and the board will now go into closed session. For purposes permitted by the Texas government codes, Texas government code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter, Texas code 551.074, deliberation regarding resignation, termination, employment, reassignments duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers, Texas government code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed, Texas code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings, Texas government code 551.74, deliberation and consideration of employment of Grandview Hills Elementary School principal, Texas government code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of Plain Elementary School principal, Texas government code 551.74, deliberation and consideration of employment of Whitestone Elementary School principal. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session. It is 9:52 PM and the board is returning to open session. Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Alexandra Peoples for principal at Grandview Hills Elementary School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second. Francesca makes motion, Anna seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven ayes, motion passes.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Emily Ulatowski for principal at Plain Elementary School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second.
Francesca makes motion, Christine seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Michelle Jackson for principal at Whitestone Elementary School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
I second.
Francesca makes motion, Christine seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes, motion passes. It is 9:53 PM and having no further business, this meeting of Leander ISD Board of Trustees is adjourned.